But to my fellow council members and to members of the public, I'm so pleased and honored to have been a member of the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc., since 1988, which is a thirty-sixth year term of service and being part of an organization that has meant so much in our country in terms of enhancing the quality of life for so many people. And look at those distinguished men, how they look, the representatives, and they're a... who's applauding? They are. They are very distinguished. But the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity was founded in 1906, and I'll just read a little bit about the fraternity and also, as I recognize, Vice President Netherly. Whereas Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc., the first intercollegiate Greek letter fraternity established for black college students, was founded at Cornell University in Ithaca, New York in 1906... oh, six? Whereas, oh, six? Whereas Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc., in a period of ninety years, grew from one undergraduate group of seven members to an international organization with active membership of over one hundred and fifty thousand members, and the national organization is now the central organization to many subordinate chapters. And whereas Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc., was founded on the precepts of manly deeds, scholarship, and love for all mankind, and whereas Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc., the southwest region encompasses the great states of Arkansas, Louisiana, Oklahoma, and Texas, and is holding its seventy-eighth annual southwest regional convention in our great city of New Orleans, and we are so honored to have members from throughout the nation and especially the southwest region here. And whereas Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc., for seventy-eight years, the brothers of the southwest region promoted strong character, community service, high scholastic achievements, and the completion of college, so now therefore be it proclaimed by the city of New Orleans that the New Orleans City Council recognizes and celebrates the life and times and contributions of the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc. Today, I present this proclamation to southwest regional Vice President Jermaine O'Netherly, and I say thank you for your service and thank you to the great Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity for all that you do for people to enhance the quality of life for mankind. Please, everyone, if you will join me in a round of applause for these brothers. And I'm gonna ask if Council Vice... Council President Moreno and Council Member King have anything that they'd like to add?
Thank you, Councilmember Green. I think you really, you know, drove the point home of just the appreciation that this city council has for your fraternity, for all that you do, not just in our community, but across the nation. We truly appreciate just how much you give back. You know, this isn't just a social fraternity. This is really about giving back to your communities, and we are so appreciative of that, but also to the point of the role models that you are for young men. Thank you for that as well. So, of course, we welcome you to the city of New Orleans, those who are not from here. We're excited to have your regional conference here, and we hope you have a wonderful time. Thank you for being here.
Just wanted to congratulate you for the men of Alpha Phi Alpha. A lot of great men, not good, but great men throughout the years have come through your organization, so thank you all for all the work that you do in this city, not just during this weekend, but year-round. Appreciate it.
Brothers, in the spirit of our black and gold, you know that I'd be there today with recognizing prostate and colon cancer survivors, and it's our theme color for the day. But this evening, I will have black and gold, and I will celebrate with you in terms of my attire. But Brother Netherly, please add to my comments.
Awesome. Madam President, Brother Green and members of city council, once again, I want to say thank you so very much. My name is Jermaine Netherly. I am the southwestern regional vice president of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, bringing your greetings from our joint president, Brother Dr. Willis L. Alonso III, and all the brothers of Texas, Oklahoma, Arkansas, and Louisiana. So while I do have a small contingency of brothers here with me, and I appreciate them coming, but I wanted to let you know that we have over eleven hundred brothers that will be here in the city to enjoy the culture and the cuisine that is New Orleans. So thank you so very much for always making accommodations for us, and thank you for supporting our brothers that are here in the city that love and support this great city. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, and Brother, fellow council member, fellow council member Oliver Thomas has joined us. Would you like to come in?
I don't wanna belabor this. I'll be with y'all tonight.
Sounds good.
I'm one of the speakers, so.
All right. Thank you. So what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna ask you all to come around, and council members are gonna come down, and we're gonna do our best to take a picture with the representatives who are here today, so come on around, and we'll present this proclamation.
We gotta get some more.
Give me a clean ass scratch.
We gotta get some more.
Okay, so these are the... this is the list of the presenters.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
Counselman Thomas?
Okay, so these are the... this is the list of the presenters.
They're all here?
Yes.
Okay.
And, um...
Wait. Time out.
Mm-hmm.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
Wait. Time out.
Mm-hmm.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We're just looking for my fifth member, and we'll be ready to start.
We can go ahead and get started.
Roll call. Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Green. Councilmember Morell. Councilmember Moreno.
President.
Councilmember King. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Jerusalem. We have five members. We have a core.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Pastor Bhutan will be leading our prayer. For those who can stand, please do so.
Let's bow our heads in a moment of prayer. Precious Father, how we thank you, how we honor you, how we adore you. We give you praise and thanks for this day that you've given us. God, we pray right now that as we come together to meet, that you would be in our midst. God, we pray for our council, that you would continue to crown them with wisdom, with knowledge, and with guidance to God as they lead our city. We thank you for all of our residents who are here on today. To God, we thank you for those that are coming to meet for the betterment of this city. Father, we ask right now that your peace be in this place, and that everything be done in decency, in order, and in your name. We pray this prayer today. Amen.
Amen. Councilmember Harris will lead the pledge.
To the Republic called which is stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Special orders of business. The first, second, and third orders of business is a presentation. Dr. Jennifer Avagno, Director of the New Orleans Department of Health; Dr. John N. Vaughn, Public Health Clinic Director, New Orleans Health Department; Dr. Dwight McKenna, Orleans Parish Coroner; Dr. Jeremy Dumas, Chief Medical Officer, Inclusive Care; Dr. Eric Griggs, Access Health, Louisiana; Dr. Valentine Infonsa... I'm sorry if I messed up your name. Chair of LSU Surgery Department, and representatives from the Louisiana Cancer Center, Tulane Medical Center, Ashna Health, Ashna Health, Turow, LCMC Health, and Prostate and Colon Cancer Survivors. The Honor Rees, Frank Robinson, Councilmember-at-Large, J.P. Morell; Augusta Malvo, Councilmember-at-Large, Helena Moreno; Ernest Shallow Jr., Councilmember, District C, Freddie King III; The Benjamin and Yancy Foundation, Councilmember, District D, Eugene J. Green Jr.; Kyra Johnson, Councilmember, District E, Oliver M. Thomas Jr. Recognizing various medical professionals, support organizations, survivors, and service agencies for their community involvement and engagement during Prostate and Colon Cancer Awareness Month.
This is already a successful morning. I want to thank our panelists today for being willing to share the information that you have and your passion for wanting to help people, to heal people, and to help people move forward in great health. I want to tell you that today, my remarks are very simple. We lose too many people to prostate cancer and the colon cancer, colorectal-related illness and disease, and the more that we talk about it, the more I think people will be willing to do the screening that is necessary, the testing that is necessary, and you, by being here today, may help someone, but you certainly are ready, because I've already gotten phone calls from people who just appreciate the fact that professionals such as yourself are coming to talk about a subject that we don't talk about enough, we need to talk about more, and if we talked about more, it could save lives. Before we move forward with your presentations, which will start with Dr. McKenna, I'd like to ask Councilman Freddie King if he will introduce a special guest who has a special gift for all of us today.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. It is my great pleasure to introduce Abigail Marie King. She is going to start the day off with a musical note, so we're gonna do it where we practice at home. Coming from Al Jairs, Louisiana, I present to you, Abigail Marie King.
All right.
Thank you, Abigail, and thank you, Mom, for the piano lessons, and thank you, Councilmember Green.
Okay, okay. And who is Mom? Tell everybody who is Mom, and the names of the young family members, the King family members who are here.
We have, we have...
What a beautiful family.
Thank you. Thank you. We have my wife, Cassandra King; Abigail King; Gabriella. Wave your hand, Gabby. Wave your hand. Freddie. Fred...
Yeah, that's right. Everybody knows Freddie.
Sue. All right. And Liliana. Liliana, and she's being held by the original Mrs. King, Madeline King.
Let's give them a round of applause. It's beautiful family. Thank you. Thank you, Abigail, for starting us off in that very, very worthy way. None at all. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. McKenna, and, um, for a little while, and I appreciate, I will, I will say this, I appreciate the members of the council for allowing the three orders of business today to be dedicated to such an important subject matter, certainly health, colorectal and prostate cancer. We know the devastating effect that it has on our communities. And even before we move forward, I want to thank Ms. Lena Stewart, and also my Legislative Director, Attorney, Monique Green, not related, also just gotta always make that clear. At the end of the day, their work and the work of the staff members in Councilman Thomas's office and in my office, and the contribution that other council members made is greatly appreciated. This is a subject that is near and dear to my heart. I think that everybody probably knows someone who has either suffered from prostate or colon cancer or passed away from it. The more we can talk about it, the better, so I want to thank everyone who made today possible. So, Dr. McKenna, why don't you start us off, please?
Well, I certainly thank the city council for getting us here today to talk about the these two serious diseases, which certainly ravage the country and internationally for that matter. Prostate cancer, of course, is the most common cancer in men, and colorectal cancer is in the top three or four in both men and women when you look at the statistics surrounding it. Both of these cancers are slow-growing and give us an opportunity to diagnose them early if we do the proper screening, so that we could... These are two cancers, while very prevalent, give us a chance to improve our survival rates with early detection, because they are the two of the cancers where early detection methods are available to us, and certainly in cancer, the most important thing is early detection, and your outcomes are always better when you can find cancer early and then use one of the myriads of treatments that have evolved over the years in both of these cancers, as a matter of fact. The treatments range from very simple observation to radical surgery, and it is important to catch it early so you can make those kinds of appropriate decisions as to which course may be better for you. So, the distinguished panel members here probably have more information than I do. Certainly, I've spent forty years as a surgeon and have had tremendous clinical experience with not prostate cancer, but colon cancer. So, I think that the more you talk about it, the more awareness that we can bring, the more people understand that we can intervene at earlier stages, and the earliest intervention is the best treatment. So, with all of saying all of that, and with all of that in mind, I will turn over the microphone to Dr. Duma, since he's to my left. Okay.
Thank you. Building on what Dr. McKenna said, early detection is key. Prostate cancer, colorectal cancer, very, very slowly growing cancers, in the big picture of cancer. You can detect those early, and you can make a difference. There's a reason why if you have a colonoscopy and it looks good, they may tell you, come back in ten years or five years. It's gonna take that long for something to come up that's gonna be of significance. Problem comes when you don't get that screening. You're forty-five, you're gonna think about it later. You're fifty, you're gonna think about it later. Maybe you get busy at fifty-two or fifty-three, and you start having problems at fifty-four, and we see this a lot, and now you're afraid, because now I've been having some issues. An amazing amount of people are afraid to go to the doctor, because they don't want to hear what's going on, but the ostrich theory of medicine and healthcare will never work. You can't bury your head in the sand and pretend that it doesn't exist. We run into a little, a little bit more difficulty. Our clinics are primarily on the West Bank and primarily in the African-American community. We, if you're, if you're gonna look at prostate cancer, even colorectal cancer, and, and I'm not gonna have all the statistics, but we have a ton of smart people up here who are gonna have those statistics for you. On the ground, we do still have trouble with screenings. The stigma of screening, especially with colorectal cancer, we fight through that all the time. Different methods that you can use to screen for colorectal cancer, I still think that colonoscopy is gonna be the best method. We consider that more cancer prevention, because if you see a polyp, you see anything, you can snip it off, your chances of cancer are gonna be a lot less. But we also realize that there are gonna be a certain group of, a percentage of patients who are not gonna do a colonoscopy, so the recommendations have shifted a little bit. Do the test that the patient's going to do, so that's, that's what you want to do now. If I can't convince you to get a colonoscopy, maybe I can convince you to do a Cologuard. If I can't convince you to do that, maybe you can do a stool study, and I'm gonna bother you until you do. I'm gonna give you the right of first refusal every single time I see you, until you decide that it's important enough to actually get done, because all of us up here can. We went to the same schools, we know the same medicine, we can write the same prescriptions. That's, that's not the trick. The trick is convincing people that what you're telling them is important enough for them to actually do, and that's where you're gonna have to reach people individually. We try to figure out how to do that on a community-wide level, but that's gonna be a bit more difficult. You know, we try to get one person, that person brings someone else in. You tell your brother, you tell your uncle, and your uncle.
those statistics for you. Um, on the ground, um, we do still have trouble with, with screenings, um, the stigma of screening, um, especially with colorectal cancer, we fight through that all the time, different methods that you can use to screen for colorectal cancer, I still think that colonoscopy is going to be the best method, um, we, we consider that more cancer prevention, because if you see a polyp, you see anything, you can snip it off, your chances of cancer are going to be a lot less. Um, but we also realize that there are going to be a certain group of, of, a percentage of patients who are not going to do a colonoscopy, so the recommendations have shifted a little bit. Um, do the test that the patient's going to do, so that's, that's what you want to do now. If I can't convince you to get a colonoscopy, maybe I can convince you to do a Cologuard. If I can't convince you to do that, maybe you can do a stool study, um, and I'm going to bother you until you do. I'm going to give you the right of first refusal every single time I see you until you decide that it's important enough, um, to actually get done, because all of us up here can, we went to the same schools, we know the same medicine, we can write the same prescriptions, that's, that's not the trick, the trick is convincing people that what you're telling them is important enough for them to actually do, um, and that's where you're going to have to reach people, um, individually, we try to figure out how to do that on a community-wide level, but that's going to be a bit more difficult, you know, we try to get one person, that person brings someone else in, you tell your brother, you tell your uncle and your auntie, and they're going to trust you probably more than they trust me, and if you say it's okay, then it's, then it's going to be fine, um, especially with prostate cancer, we know that in, in the African-American community, the prevalence is probably twice as much and more lethal, um, so I, I do screen for that, I know the recommendation is to have a discussion with your patients, I will discuss it briefly, it's not really, uh, do you want it or not, it's more where, when we get your labs, I'm going to send that in with you, and, um, that's how we've been able to get our screening rates up, and I've probably said enough, I'm, I'm going to defer to anybody else that wants to, um, to jump in, but in the big picture, both cancers are very preventable, they're easily detectable, the screenings are, are painless despite what anybody thinks, um, and two of the few cancers that we can actually make a big difference if we catch them early, so there's no reason that our mortality rates, our cancer rates should be that high for those two particular, um, diseases.
Thank you. Dr. Green?
Good morning. Uh, so, let me get the, uh, the doctor stuff out of the way, I just had an epiphanal moment. Uh, the stats are one in eight men, uh, in the United States will be one in seven, uh, 1.7, uh, will be diagnosed with, uh, prostate.
1.7 for black men.
1.7 for black men. And then, eh, for colorectal cancer, it's one in twenty-three for men and one in twenty-five for women. Um, I, I had a moment, and I have to stop myself from getting emotional, because I just realized in the back, sitting here, it was actually ten years ago to the month that I came in here with my hula hoops, talking about my get checked, get fit, get moving, and I went on a underwear exam crusade across the city, uh, at the barber shops, at the churches, on the radio, everywhere I could, and the reason it was an underwear exam is because most men, when they shook my hands, they were like, "Doc, your hair is too big to be my doctor." I'm not going to get that exam, because I don't want the finger, and I, they associated the colorectal, uh, cancer, the colonoscopy with fingers, so I did this thing, and, uh, we were pretty successful, but then, um, in the midst of it, one of my best friends, Danny Williams, who I'd have on the radio with me, um, we were jogging, trying to raise money for the American Heart Association, and he kept having pain in the lower-left quadrant of his stomach, and I thought he was just, you know, kind of not really wanting to run, because we were at mile nine or ten, um, kept pestering him to go to the doctor, and he was forty-one at the time, and it turned out to be colorectal cancer, and it was the size of a golf ball. Now, he was only forty-one, which means he didn't fall into those lines and those parameters, the, the stats that I just said, but he fell, it fell on my doorstep and in my heart. Um, so, it was ten years ago, um, that I started that campaign, and I had him on the radio, I did everything I possibly could, but sadly, it was too late. Um, no one in his family talked about cancer, he didn't know, and we still don't know if he has a family history of colorectal cancer or any cancers, one out of every five deaths in the United States is due to cancer. So, before we went to school to become doctor this, doctor that, well, I was just Eric with close friends and family, and right now, in my immediate circle, I have five men that are either, either immediately post-survival for prostate cancer, and one actively with it, who's, he might have just turned forty, uh, another one in his late sixties that just had it, and then two doctors, two of my colleagues, when people want me to come and be on, on panels to speak about prostate cancer, I usually, if they're in town, I try to defer to them, because no one is more of an expert on your body than the amazing people in this room that have survived. So, it's one thing to talk about something objective, and we're talking about prostate cancer and colorectal cancer, and it, it's, it's emotional for me, because the campaign continues, now, I got back to help spread the word, but if anyone can avoid the pain of losing a loved one to something that is truly curable by prevention, and it's simply a conversation with any of these colleagues or anyone, any of their doctors, um, then I, I'd love to do it, and I'm, I'm proud to be here, I'll, I'll stop there, I don't want to start crying, my dad will be mad.
Yeah. Well, thank you, I appreciate that, I appreciate that personal testimony, too.
Um, so, good morning, again, thank you, Dr., uh, uh, Ms. Green for inviting us, I'm, I'm Val Fonsemp, I'm a colorectal surgeon by training, and so I see a lot of colon cancer patients and rectal cancer patients, I've been in New Orleans a year and four months now, I came from Arizona, where I was there for eleven years, and I came here as the Chair of Surgery here, and to run, uh, LCMC, uh, Cancer Service Line. I can tell you, I'm just going to reframe the question a little bit more, colorectal cancer is the third most common diagnosed cancer in the United States, and the second cause of cancer-related death. A hundred and fifty thousand people will be diagnosed this year of colorectal cancer, and fifty thousand of them will die, okay? Despite that, we've made significant progress in the last thirty years. Incidence of colorectal cancer in the last thirty years gone down almost twelve percent, almost twelve percent. The Affordable Care Act, expansion of Medicaid significantly improved early access, early screening, in a recent paper we're just about to publish, we actually saw that, now we're diagnosing cancer, colorectal cancer even earlier, so people presenting an earlier stage than a later stage. Now, I can tell you that in those thirty years or so, we've seen a significant increase in colorectal cancer in younger patients. So, you know, twelve years ago, or one of the papers we published actually showed that seventy, almost eighty-four percent for rectal cancer and sixty-four for, for colon cancer. And so what does that mean? And not only that, a significant disparity, right? We see younger patients, especially African-American patients and Hispanic patients, even being diagnosed at a much earlier stage. So, this, I'm sure everybody here knows, the American Cancer Society, uh, this, all this early diagnosis prompted them to reduce screening age to forty-five, and forty-five, from our studies, is not good enough for black men and black women, we really think it should actually be lower than that, because the age between forty and forty-four, we see even a higher spike of, of colorectal cancer. So we've made progress, we're screening better with new, uh, techniques, and people are dying less, believe it or not, uh, the incidence of death is actually trending down because of new techniques, new modalities, new treatment options that we have. Screening, I, I just want to particularly echo what, uh, some of the other panelists have been talking about, screening should be targeted, it's not one size fits all, right? So, eh, coming from Arizona, where we had to target the border areas, we had to lobby the, the, uh, state government to provide funds for screening and education, health education is key, significant impact to churches and worship places, those are the places where we can actually make significant difference. Now, I can tell you, moving to, uh, New Orleans and working at UMC, nearly every patient I see of color presents with a more advanced disease. What that tells me, if they're coming with stage four disease, they just don't know when to screen, they have symptoms for a long period of time, they just don't even know what's going on, and so screening is a key, education is a key, that's the only way we can actually move this needle a little bit.
Hello, hello, good morning. Um, as an emergency medicine physician, um, I think a lot would question, I guess, why I'm here, but I think all would agree, um, at the panel here, that if, at the time in the emergency department that you are seeing me, it is way too late. Um, there is a common echo and theme that is frequently, you know, being brought up here, and that's the word of screening. Um, screening is so important, and it's pivotal, um, that you do so for what makes sense for you, right? As you've heard here, there are many different methods of screening, um, there are blood tests, there are physical exams, and you can work with your provider, um, to figure out what is the best method for you to get to the best optimal health. Um, the public health provider in me, um, as an employee of the Health Department, um, is saddened when I have to unfortunately go to a patient and tell them that the imaging that I got for them for their belly pain, or for their weight loss, or for their frequent, you know, urination, or their inability to urinate, um, you know, blood in their urine, weight loss, at that point, a lot of times it's too late, um, you know, and I hate to be graphic, but these are the things that our patients at that point are commonly presenting with, um, when, you know, with their primary care provider, they could have done testing, um, had their appropriate screening, and maybe would not have been to that point. Um, as others have also echoed, um, you know, the survivability, when you do the early screening and detection, if it's confined and the cancer is confined, at that point, you know, your survivability for at least prostate cancer is up to ninety-eight percent. So, we're seeing that when you can intervene early, I mean, you're saving lives, you're able to be there for your loved ones, um, and so, if you don't get anything else from today, I would like to just echo, screening, 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 it's important, um, and with colon cancer, we're seeing that less, so I think before, we're thinking, "Oh, I'm too young, it's not time for me," regardless of your family history, a lot of times you may not have any symptoms, um, so that's why it's really important, you know, to think about these things, to talk about these things with your loved ones, to encourage others to do the same, even if that's bringing your family member to their doctor's appointment and advocating whatever you have to do, um, you know, just advocate love on your loved ones and bring them in so that we can all be healthy and happy and have the ability to be with our loved ones.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, I'm Dr. Anthony Jase, I'm, uh, Director of Population Health with Inclusive Care, and originally I was supposed to be here for support, but, uh, my medical director, Dr. Dumas, dragged me up here, um, and I can piggyback on everything that all the panelists said this morning, um, we can spit out a bunch of statistics, we can use a lot of big words, but I like to always try to relate to my patients in layman's terms, and the bottom line is prostate cancer and colorectal cancer are two of the few, few cancers that we can completely cure or get rid of if we catch it early. Now, each of these cancers are associated with certain signs and symptoms, you know, with, with the colorectal cancer, you, you could have blood in your stool, you could have abdominal pain, you could have change in your, your bowel habits, all of that, you have weight loss, same as, eh, as with, with prostate cancer in men, it can affect, you know, how you urinate, um, as you get older, you, you know, you, you develop these problems. But I like to impress upon the patients is, don't wait until you get problems, because out of all of those symptoms that I just mentioned, the main one that I always harp on is no symptoms at all. I'm going to say that again, the biggest symptom is no symptom at all. So, how do we combat that? We screen, we go to the doctor, we get checked regularly, because once again, these are two of the cancers that if addressed early enough, would, there's a greater than ninety percent chance that you will die from something else other than those two cancers. So, if we could just impress that upon our patient populations, um, and then get past the negative, uh, stigma of getting tested, then hopefully we can make up some ground as far as increasing our screenings and, uh, addressing these problems in our community.
Thank you. Thank you. This has certainly been very valuable thus far, I want to thank our healthcare professionals for the presentation that you made on this particular day, because of the way we advertise it, I know there might be more people watching than usual, but also this taping will be shared with our, with the community members through, not only the newsletter that I do, but through other mediums, so I definitely want to thank you. We're going to have an opportunity in a second for council members to comment and ask any questions. We do have an organization that is being recognized today, it's the Benjamin and Yancey Foundation, and I'm going to ask Dr. Beth Bridges, the Vice President and Co-Founder, she'll take a couple of minutes to tell us about it, because persons who are affected by this disease need to know that there are people in organizations who are ready to hear and help them to get the resources they need. Dr. Bridges?
Good morning. My name is Beth Bridges. I am the Co-Founder and Vice President of the Benjamin and Yancey Foundation. To my left is Mrs. Jean Benjamin, who is the Co-Founder and President of the organization, and to her left is Ms. Elizabeth Bridges Townsend, who's our Media Director. Back in December of twenty seventeen, we founded the Benjamin and Yancey Foundation. It was named after two phenomenal educators collectively had given seventy years of service to the greater New Orleans, um, area, and they lost their fight to breast cancer. After that, Mrs. Jean Benjamin's husband detected prostate cancer, and we realized there wasn't a lot of, um, resources, as you will, so we decided to add back to our mission also, to address prostate cancer. Um, we offer educational workshops, we do support, uh, meetings for our men who have prostate cancer, also to the breast cancer, um, recipients, we do support, we also do cancer kits. But, you know, I just attended a meeting two weeks ago in Washington, DC, it's called Zero Prostate Cancer, and we were on the hill petitioning our congressman to push this bill that's going to, um, do, that's going to reach education, it's going to do resource, and it's going to, um, have men come in and have these tests done. It was also brought to my attention at that meeting that Louisiana, you know, we always the last on the first list, and first on the last list, that in this particular state, we have more men dying from prostate cancer because of lack of screening. So we are petitioning all of you, the council, and all these, um, medical professionals to get behind us this year, because we want to do a citywide screening, because children deserve to have a father, women deserve to have a husband, and a household deserve to have a man, and we have to become unbrothers keepers, you know, to stop this cancer, because if it's catch early, it's curable and it's treatable.
Thank you very much. Sorry. And thank you for introducing Mrs. Jean Benjamin Vappi and Elizabeth Townsend, thank you all for the work that you do, and it makes a difference because it's saving lives, thank you. So, at this time, for a minute, I'm going to ask each member of the council to make comments, but also to let members know that we have a segment where we're going to be recognizing survivors of prostate or colon cancer during their remarks, so I'll start with Councilmember Leslie Harris.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Green, for, uh, your commitment to this, and thank you to the panelists. I can tell you that my grandmother died from colon cancer, because she was one of the people who stuck her head in the sand and did not get checked, and had uterine cancer that then spread to her colon, so, um, you know, as much as we press men to get screened, women also need to be screened as well, so I, I, you know, loud and clear, women, please go get your, um, colonoscopy, and I will tell you, I'm a hypocrite, hypocrite right now, because I have not gone to get one, but I have one scheduled in April, um, and I had the box that I could not use, so I was like, let me just go through this, um, so I am going to get checked, but I really would encourage women and men to go get screened, because it is absolutely curable, and, you know, losing my grandmother to something that was curable, um, is really upsetting, so thank you for being here today, thank you to the survivors, and Councilmember King, thank you for having your family here today to cheer us up on this day, that really should be celebrated, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Agarusha, if you want to, okay?
Freddie's been here longer than I have.
All right, okay. Well, to all the panelists, thank you for the information, um, thank you for the testimonials, and I want to just echo what has been echoed already, um, early screening is, is the key, so I, I know people personally who were screened early, um, and they were able to, to defeat this cancer, and on the flip side, I know people who didn't, and it, it took them, so I just want to echo what's been said already, early detection, early screening, and this is something that's truly preventable and curable, thank you.
Well, thank you for, uh, the entire panel for, for not only for being here, but of course for, for the work that you do, um, in your professions in our community every single day. You know, to, to be honest, uh, uh, let, let's just call it like it is, I mean, so often people don't want to get these tests because they're embarrassed to get the tests, um, they think that it's, you know, uh, uh, whether it's, uh, you know, like, too much of a violation even, you know, some say, when you talk about these particular tests. So, I'm forty-six years old, obviously now I hit the mark where I needed to get, um, a, a colonoscopy or, you know, get a, an analysis done, right? And so I went to my doctor, she informed me of this, and, you know, just like Councilmember Harris was talking about, like, me too. And, you know, just like Councilmember Harris was talking about, like, me too. They were like, here's your little Colaguard box thing that came in the mail. And just like Councilmember Harris, I'm just gonna be very honest. I was like, I am not sure if I can do this. But, you know, to your point, doctor, it's what test works for you. So I called my doctor and I said, you know what? I'm just, can I just come in and just get the whole colonoscopy? Can I just do that? She's like, absolutely. Let's set you up, let's get you an appointment. And, you know, I'd heard, or I thought, I didn't even really hear. It's like, I thought in my mind, I'm like, this is gonna be so terrible. This is gonna be like such a horrible test, like, oh, my gosh. And how am I gonna drink this liquid? And it's gonna be just awful. Can I just tell you, it was not that big of a deal. It really was not that big of a deal. For me, because I eat, I have to eat all the time, like, I'm one of those people that's constantly eating, the hardest part for me was not being able to get up and like have a big breakfast. Like, that was hard. And having to be on like chicken broth the day before, like, that was the hardest part of the whole thing. And I'll tell you this, when I finally got the test, for everyone who's listening, let me just tell you about the test. So just like, I'm sure everyone else who's having their first colonoscopy, like, what is this gonna be like? Oh, my gosh, you know, I'm just, I'm a little bit embarrassed, I don't know, what's it gonna be like? Okay, it was so easy, and I had the best nap I've had in, like, I can't even remember, okay? I mean, I don't know exactly what kind of, you know, drugs you all use to, you know, make you to go to sleep for those few minutes. But I'm telling you, I didn't want to wake up. I mean, they were like, Ms. Moreno, you know, we really gotta get you going. And I'm like, can I stay a little bit longer? So the test was so incredibly easy. And I remember even coming back and telling, you know, fellow council members, because I told them that I was going for a colonoscopy, how easy it was. And ever since then, to my friends who have been like maybe embarrassed or not wanting to do the test, feeling a little reluctant, I've been constantly telling them just how easy it is. And I get it, the box is a little weird. For some, it may be great, but it was a little weird for me. But for those who, you know, opt to take, get the colonoscopy, it is so incredibly easy. And the best part about it, you know, if you do go and get one and the results are fairly positive, you don't have to come back for several years, which is also really great. So anyway, so that was my story, that was my message. It is incredibly easy. All those thoughts you may have in your mind, you can actually do away with them because it's super easy. And once again, if you get that colonoscopy, you'll get some pretty good sleep too. So thank you all.
Thank you, Council President Moreno. Councilman Thomas?
Thank you, Councilmember Green and the staffs who worked on this. As I look at the panel, I see medical angels, really. People I've worked with in the community. Dr. Griggs, over 10 years ago, WBOK, we started a show, Get Checked, Get Fit, Get Moving, focused on African-American men and women and their overall wellness. 30 years ago, Dr. McKenna, you did a, commissioned a study on black men and boys 30 years ago about their overall wellness. Just recently, the Brookings Institute came out a report about how black men and boys are in jeopardy in the face of every social institution, from their wellness to their economic stability. CNBC just came out with a report, Dr. Val, that says that our black men and boys are being left out of the economy. Dr. Dumas' family has been committed to our medical wellness for years. It's 1.2 and 1.7% when you talk about these two cancers, especially as it relates to our mortality rate. I say that because overall wellness and general health is really not about race. But when you talk about mortality, race and disparity, it absolutely is about race. I was fortunate enough, and I am fortunate enough, to have a doctor during my general checkup and wellness who didn't wait, asked for my permission to schedule it. Dr. McKenna scheduled it and told me what day I was gonna go. And I think, I say that because for the men and women at the table, y'all have worked hard to make sure that we can live in spite of. Dr. Val, your comment, it says what it tells you. And in the research and conversations that Dr. Griggs and I have had, there's another indicator that led to Dr. McKenna's report on black men and boys, that led to the work that LCMC does for overall wellness for black folk, that led to the efforts of Dr. Dumas and Dr. Val and others. And it says exposure to our environment. Those medical, those nutritional things, right? The disparity that happens after the fact is one thing. But to understand what Charles Blow says and what it means to be African-American and step out of your door, the stresses of the environment that have an impact on not just our overall wellness, but our ability and inability to fight diseases that are not just manifested for us. So, Dr. Val, when you say what it tells you, it says that society, Dr. Griggs and Dr. McKenna, Dr. Dumas, Dr. Jace, and young lady, has to take a greater look at our exposure to stuff and to stresses and to stress and to disparities that other communities are not exposed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember?
Good morning. I just want to say that I think it's so important to have this discussion publicly. I mean, I've said this so many times, whether it's about mental health, whether it's about breast cancer awareness when we're here for that. I think particularly when you're dealing with colorectal issues, it's even more uncomfortable and maybe considered gauche to talk about it or impolite to talk about it out loud. But it's a part of being a human being and something, I think, as Councilmember King and as obviously all of you have said, that is easily preventable, easily treatable. And so much about this is de-stigmatizing and making sure that people know getting early care, getting early access to care, having a good, healthy diet is the best things that we can all do. So I appreciate you all continuing to lift this issue up and making sure that people know that you don't need to hide. It's okay, as Councilmembers Harris and Moreno said, to go to the doctor and not be scared. The fear of going is actually worse than the going itself. So we appreciate that. And to Councilmember King's daughter, I heard you playing upstairs and you sounded great. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a great morning. Our presenters have added so much. And I know that those members of the public who are watching now or who are gonna be watching in the future will appreciate the information that they got. We also have an opportunity to celebrate today some survivors of colon or prostate cancer. And I'm gonna start off with a proclamation. I'm gonna offer this proclamation and ask that it be myself, Councilmember Jeruso, and Councilmember Harris. They know this guy very well. Whereas the City of New Orleans is renowned for its food, festivals, famous citizens and foreign visitors. And whereas the city council takes great pride in paying tribute to events and activities, now therefore be it proclaimed by the City of New Orleans that the New Orleans City Council recognizes someone who's part of our team, Derek Brumfield. Derek Brumfield is a prostate cancer survivor. He's also a member of the council's security team. And his proclamation says that we wish you the best and a permanent recovery from this disease. Thank you for sharing your success with others who can benefit from knowing your story. Stand for a second, Mr. Brumfield, so that people can see. And we're gonna take a picture afterwards. But, Mr. Brumfield, thank you for always being willing to talk about your survival and also how you can help others in that respect. I also have a proclamation for an organization that was introduced today. And they are an organization whose members are committed to helping other citizens, other residents, respond to and survive in the midst of the breast cancer and prostate cancer challenges especially. But I'm so pleased to recognize with those same proclamation words, the Benjamin and Yancey Foundation. Thank you for your commitment to helping and recognizing survivors of breast cancer and prostate cancer. Your work emphasizing early detection is paying great dividends in our community and will present this proclamation at the front. But thank you very much for the work that you've done and for also continuing to shine the light on what you experienced and how what you experience can help others, the way it can help others. Thank you.
This next recipient I've known for quite some time. And the men and women at the table can tell you that people who face their mortality and survive it, there's something different about them. And I never really knew why this person's reeked their humanity, even when you would talk to them, but you would be in their presence, right? You could feel their spirit. And now I know why. I know why Kara Johnson's humanity is bigger than who she is as a person. And why when you're in her presence, you can feel the fact that she puts others first and she puts herself second and why she's a great servant. But now I know, because I didn't know that she was a survivor. And this reads that where the city council takes great pride in paying tribute to events and activities, now therefore be it proclaimed that we recognize Kara Johnson's survivor prostate and colon cancer awareness. Difficult roads can lead to beautiful destinations. There's always hope beyond what you see. My hope is that people would not have to face their mortality or face the time when they're on the bottom looking up, but that God could give them humanity so that people could see it no matter what they're going through. And Kara represents that. God bless you, Kara.
Council President Helena Moreno?
Thank you, Councilmember Green. The person who I'm honoring today is the father of Greg Malvo. Greg works in my office. And his father, Augusta Malvo, is a survivor of prostate cancer. Unfortunately, he wasn't feeling well today and isn't able to be with us. But we wanted to celebrate him, celebrate his life, and celebrate the fact that he made it through this very difficult circumstance. And I'll present this particular proclamation to Greg. Thank you.
Councilmember Freddie King?
Thank you, Councilmember Green. I am handling a proclamation for... Oh, man, you right on time. No, go, go, go. Okay, okay. Well, I am presenting this proclamation to someone who is near and dear to me, my uncle, Ernest Shallow Jr. He is a prostate cancer survivor. And I have it, I'm gonna read a snippet from it. It said, "Be it proclaimed by the City of New Orleans that the council recognizes Ernest Shallow Jr. for his perseverance in his battle, in successful battle with prostate cancer."
Council Vice President Morel?
Thank you. Sorry for my tardiness. My proclamation today is for Sergeant Frank B. Robertson III. Where are you out there, Sergeant Robertson? There you are. Thank you so much for being here today. Sergeant Robertson was diagnosed with stage two prostate cancer, prostate cancer, December of 2022. And he was assured it was treatable. And on March 4th, 2023, Frank decided to go undergo a radical prostatectomy to remove the cancer, which was successful. And I also believe you're retiring from NPD soon too. The last Friday, so thank you for your service. We really appreciate you being here today and all the time you spent serving our city.
As I mentioned, this has been a very special day. I again want to thank the members of the council who deferred relative to the special orders of business so that we could cover this very, very important topic. I certainly want to thank our presenters. You have many things that you could be doing today, but you're here because of your commitment to the community. And I'm gonna ask everyone to give our presenters a round of applause too. I want to thank departments in the city, such as the Department of Property Management, for the work that they did to help out. And I mentioned the names already, but, you know, a lot of staff members on different levels, council District E and council District D worked on this. But I do want to recognize two-point people who are very sincere and also did a good job today to make sure that we had the recognition in place and also that we have done those things that it takes to make this a successful day. So once again, please join me in a round of applause for Ms. Lena Stewart and attorney Monique Green for their work. And so at this time, we're gonna come as a council before here and take a picture with our survivors so that we can get everybody in. I'm gonna divide it up into survivors first and then our presenters. Thank you very much for today, very successful day. Thank you very much for today. Very successful day.
All right, Madam Clerk, you can start reading the consent agenda.
The consent agenda. We have a communication from Aaron Spears, Chief of Staff and Council Utilities Regulatory Office. This should be marked received. We have a communication from C. Rick Hathaway, Director, Department of Public Works, City of New Orleans. This should be marked received and referred to the Public Works Committee. On page four, a communication from C. Rick Hathaway, Director, Department of Public Works, City of New Orleans. This should be marked received and referred to the Public Works Committee. We have a communication from Carrie Contine, Ph.D., Assistant Director, New Orleans Mosquito Termite and Rodent Control Board, City of New Orleans. This should be marked received and referred to the Public Works Committee. We have a communication from Eldren A. Morris, Risk Manager, Risk Management Division Chief Administrative Office, City of New Orleans. This should be marked received and referred to the Public Works Committee. On page five, we have a communication from Amy B. Trupanier, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of Civil Service. This should be marked received and referred to the Economic Development Committee. We have a communication from Amy B. Trupanier, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of Civil Service. This should be marked received and referred to the Economic Development Committee. We have a communication from Amy B. Trupanier, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of Civil Service. Amendment to the Classified Pay Plan Health EMS. On top of page six, we have a communication from Amy B. Trupanier, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of Civil Service, Amendment to the Classified Pay Plan Police Crime Lab. This should be marked received and referred to the Budget Committee as well as the one before it. On top of page seven, we have a communication from Amy B. Trupanier, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of Civil Service, Amendments to the Classified Pay Plan Sewage and Water Board Legal. This should be marked received and referred to the Budget Committee. We have a communication from Amy B. Trupanier, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of Civil Service. Amendments to the Classified Pay Plan Mosquito Control. This should be marked received and referred to the Budget Committee. We have a communication from Amy B. Trupanier, Director of Personnel, City of New Orleans, Department of Civil Service. Amendment to the Classified Pay Plan Annually. This should be marked received and referred to the Budget Committee. On top of page 10, we have a communication from Polo Rosa, 2430 North Rampart Street. This should be marked received. Suggested hearing date is April 4th. We have a communication from David O'Reilly, 518 South Rampart Street. This should be marked received. Suggested hearing date, Sep- April 4th. We have a report of Chrishell McLown, Department Deputy Police Monitor, Office of Independent Police Monitor. This should be marked received. On top of page 11, we have a report of Elizabeth Boyer, Orleans Parish Sheriff's Office. This should be marked received. We have a report of the Executive Director of the City Planning Commission. This should be marked received. Suggested hearing date, April 4th. We have a report of Anita Curran, Council Research Officer, New Orleans City Council. This should be marked received. On top of page 12, we have ordinance calendar number 34,555 by Councilmember Harris, zoning docket 8623. We have ordinance calendar number 34,556 by Councilmember Harris. Municipal addresses 2321 through 2323 Canal Street, zoning docket 8723. On top of page 13, we have ordinance calendar number 34,558 by Councilmember Harris. Municipal addresses 1601 through 03, South Norman C. Francis Parkway, zoning docket 9123. We have ordinance calendar number 34,560 by Councilmember Harris. Municipal address 130 South Telomaca Street, zoning docket number 124. On top of page 14, we have ordinance calendar number 34,561 by Councilmember King. Municipal address is 342 Olivier Street, zoning docket 324. We have ordinance calendar number 34,562 by Councilmember Jeruso, 7457 St. Charles Avenue, zoning docket 424. On top of page 15, you have ordinance calendar number 34,563 by Councilmember King. Municipal address 4001 Vermont Highway, zoning docket 524. You have ordinance calendar number 34,564 by Councilmember Jeruso. Municipal addresses 7634 Oak Street, 1125 Adam Street, zoning docket 624. On top of page 16, you have ordinance calendar number 34,565 by Councilmember Harris. Municipal address 1518 Turpsacord Street, zoning docket 824. You have motion line over M2467 by Councilmember Thomas by request. Criminal Justice Committee recommended approval. On top of page 17, we have motion line over M2485. Is being taken off of the consent agenda and deferred to April 18th. You have motion M24103 by Councilmember Jeruso by request. The questionnaire was received. Government Affairs Committee recommended approval. You have on top of page 18, motion M24105 by Councilmember Jeruso by request. The questionnaire was received. Government Affairs Committee recommended approval. We have motion M24106 by Councilmember Green by request. The questionnaire was received. Government Affairs Committee recommended approval. On top of page 19, you have motion M24107 by Councilmembers Morel, Moreno, Jeruso, King, and Thomas. The Council Utility Cable, Telecommunications, and Technology Committee recommended approval. You have resolution R24108 by Councilmembers Morel, Moreno, Jeruso, King, and Thomas. The Utility Cable, Telecommunications, and Technology Committee recommended approval. Those are all the matters on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a public comment. First, Antonio Kush. If you can come up. You'll have two minutes. Followed by Amanda Ferrygood. Good morning.
Morning. How you doing? All right, so my comment-
If you can get a little closer to the mic so we can hear you. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Antonio Kush, a 34-year-old resident of New Orleans since 2012, originally from Alabama. Um, to, in the interest of brevity, I'm not gonna go into too much details, but to say my comment on issue 12 of the agenda of basically how you all are allowed to take vacation times and how you're paid for it. Not for it. I'm not against it. I just don't care. I think there are other issues that are a lot more pressing that should be on the agenda, such as the 600 officer deficit that we facing in the city of New Orleans. I think, um, accountability among the city council, issues of who's going to be the next mayor and that being the topic of conversation in a lot of these meetings. I think those things are more important. I think it's more important that we have transparency for the citizenry and accountability for the actions of the council in regards to how you all are paid outside of the city council. For example, Andrew Chisolo's company, Wayne Partners, being paid by several council members, of which I have a list for services, um, with government contract and what have you, that we don't know why you're paying your coworker. Outside of the business, it seems to be a conflict of interest when you all are here to represent our interest and what we need. And we have residents who can't have lights, who don't have water. But we're here to address vacation time and who's gonna get paid and how we're gonna divide up the money for vacation time. I think it's, uh, slap in the face of the citizenry to have these type of things on the agenda when we have more pressing issues. And to that, I'm representing an organization, Take Back NOLA Initiative. Where we are going to take actions to bring these issues to the forefront and demand changes within the way our government is run.
That's your time, Mr. Kush. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
That's two minutes?
That was two minutes. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Two minutes to me. Thank you.
Amanda Ferrygood, you're up next, followed by Michael Eric Burnside.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Amanda Ferrygood. I am a second semester graduate student at the University of New Orleans. New Orleans is rich in history and culture. It is important that we do what we can to preserve that culture. Whether by stopping the demolition of buildings and homes or by limiting short-term rentals. So I will be addressing communication 13 that was on the agenda. Short-term rentals do provide alternative housing for tourism. However, they also change the hospitality industry, negatively affect housing availability, and impact neighborhood culture. The affordable housing crisis in New Orleans is continually increasing in gravity and affects the economic success of low-income individuals. There is already a shortage of affordable homes in New Orleans for families living below the poverty line. And short-term rentals can lessen the opportunities for affordable housing. A Boston study found when there's an increase in Airbnb listings, rent increases. Typically, when there's a 1% increase in Airbnb listings, there is also a 0.018% increase in rental rates. Although these effects seem minuscule, consider that Airbnb's average growth from year to year is about 44%. Although the city of New Orleans has placed limits of three short-term rentals per city square block and allow locals who are natives to New Orleans to own and operate the short-term rentals that they live in and to perceive, to receive a permit, there seems to be more that could be done. What zoning regulations can be put in place to further limit the concentration of short-term rentals in the neighborhood? And are there any tax credit or other options that can be put in place to motivate property owners to change short-term rentals back into long-term rentals to increase the available affordable housing? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferrygood. Appreciate your comments. Uh, Michael Eric Burnside, you're up next.
I was gonna speak on number 29, which is on page 17, but it's been withdrawn, so I think I'll just not. But I will mention on number one, which I've always mentioned, which is September, I'm gonna probably, you know, 2% chance of getting arrested because nothing's being done, nothing's being fixed. And a year will go by when September comes and I figure what the hell, you know, everybody else is upset, I might as well join them. Um, and I think I'll let it go with that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. Any public comments online?
Yeah, we have three online comments.
Okay, go ahead.
First one is regarding communication number 13, the HDLC, uh, decision regarding 2430 Rampart Street. This is from Kip Holler on behalf of the Farborough Marney Improvement Association. Kip says, "Obviously, what has been done cannot be undone. They can't put back what they already demolished. So I concede to the HDLC decision to allow retention of the demolition. However, I believe heftier fines need to be assessed. $10,000 is merely the cost of doing business." This is a metairie domiciled investor that currently owns eight investment properties in Orleans Parish. He knows the rules and he knows what he's doing. He purposefully disregarded the approved drawings and hoped that he wouldn't get caught. Hit him with a fine of $250,000 or the maximum allowed under law. Uh, the other two comments are regarding, um, let's see, number 22. This is calendar number 34560 regarding zoning at 130 South Telomaca. Michelle Schlafly says, "We are a residential rear neighboring property to 130 South Telomaca and are writing regarding the provisos to allow storage on the property for this recently rezoned neighborhood commercial establishment. The owner of this property has leased space to the nonprofit Seoul Save Our Urban Landscape. At a 25-plus-year residence behind, as a 25-plus-year resident behind this property, we do not want to live next to a tree plant nursery regardless of their intention. We have spoken to the owner of the property who says this will not happen, but now it's on the agenda today. We are asking the council to deny today's agenda item and proviso and only allow the following. That the building use can only be used as administrative office space within their stated designated business hours. That Seoul may not use the yard for any type of storage of trees, mounds of dirt, or additional organic matter for intending planting on-site. That the property, the building property not be used to house or permit overnight stays to any transient volunteers who may be from out of town. That no outdoor signage be permitted. That the wrought iron driveway gate be reinstalled. There's currently a chain link, uh, crossing the driveway where the wrought iron driveway used to be, and this could be improved upon. The Executive Director of Seoul spoke to, at the CPC meeting on January 9, 2024, and noted that the building will be used for their administrative offices only and, and storage of their two trucks in the yard and will operate during set business hours. The CPC report recommendation was for denial of the application and CPC went on, again, were again, went against the recommendation and voted to allow the neighborhood commercial establishment and allow the owner to lease the space to the nonprofit Seoul with proviso to designate the office space, but went a step further and noted that by right, the conditional use would allow Seoul to store trees, items to support their mission in the very large yard on-site. Please consider the neighbors and the original intent that Seoul came to, to the table with." Next comment is same item from Kimball Schlafly, who says, "We appreciate your limiting the neighborhood commercial establishment rezoning at 130 South Telomaca as restricted to office space only. We are glad for that. However, as a rear-facing property, we strongly object to Seoul being allowed to trans, to store trees, mounds of dirt, and organic matter on-site. At the original CPC meeting, Seoul noted that there were no plans to have storage, only office and storage, uh, of their two trucks. That the CPC took their application a step further and voted to overrule the report recommendation of denial and to additionally allow storage by right, even though they are only leasing the property. They do not own the property. As a 25-plus-year resident and homeowner behind 130 South Telomaca, we do not want to live behind a tree nursery. And we ask that you reconsider the proviso and withdraw it and/or vote no." That's it for the online comments for consent.
Okay, thank you, Anita. I'll make, uh, the, a motion's been made by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. All in favor of the consent agenda, please vote your machines. We have five yays. I think we're about to have a six, six yay. Six yays and no nays, and the consent agenda is adopted.
Councilmember, do you want to go to the 11 o'clock matter?
Yes, item 17, please.
We're on page 33.
Wait a second.
We have a legislative grouping, ordinance calendar number 34,559 by Councilmember King, and ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit a hotel over 5,000 square feet in floor area in a HUMU historic urban neighborhood mixed-use district-
Madam Clerk.
That's not the right item. The, uh, hang on. The 11 o'clock item is-
I'm sorry.
Is, is, uh, calendar number, uh, 34571.
Okay, on page 38.
There we go.
No, no.
Sorry, our, our forms are mislabeled. There we go. Not the agenda, just my internal form. There we go. Item 19.
On page 38, ordinance calendar number 34,571 by Councilmembers Paris and Moreno by request. An ordinance to authorize the revocation by city of certain public rights of way located adjacent to Caesar's Superdome in New Orleans, Louisiana, and to authorize the disposition by the city of New Orleans of certain land, including, uh, as for said, public rights of way and improvements thereon located adjacent to the Caesar's Superdome in New Orleans, Louisiana, which property is defined as the city exchanged land- Louisiana, which property is defined as the city exchanged land in the Act of Revocation of Street Dedication and Act of Exchange attached here to as Exhibit A, the Act of Exchange, in exchange for immovable property owned by the State of Louisiana designated as Parcel A in square 340, Parcel C in square 333, and the portion of Liberty Street that runs between such squares in the first municipal district of the City of New Orleans, which property is defined as the state exchanged land in the Act of Exchange and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Conick?
Hi. The New Orleans Building Corporation is happy to present to you guys the, which in assets we've been discussing for a while is a land swap between the State of Louisiana and the City of New Orleans. In exchange for streets that are adjacent to the Superdome, which are LaSalle Street, a portion of Dave Dixon Drive, the green space on West Stadium Drive, and the median on, between Poydris and Sugar Bowl Drive, the city will transfer that to the State of Louisiana in, in exchange for the state's portion of Duncan Plaza and all of the Hill Garage. So in the 1950s, the, the City of New Orleans sold to the State of Louisiana a portion of the, the Duncan Plaza where they built the garage and they had their former office building, which was destroyed during Hurricane Katrina. So it's, in some respects, coming full circle, because now we're going to have the entirety of Duncan Plaza and sort of set the table for the future consideration of a civic complex on that site. So we respectfully request approval and certainly thank the Governor's Office, the mayor for greenlighting this, and the Board of Directors, and the City Council, who have, especially Councilmember Moreno, who has lent her powers, all of you, to getting this done. And it's been a long time coming, and so we're happy to have been able to have the privilege to participate in it.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
It has been a long time coming, and I want to thank you for your work that you've done to make this possible. Certainly, I'm going to ask that I be, you know, added. This is a new City Hall that's going to be possible, so I want to certainly be added as a, you know, co-sponsor of this. But, you know, this is something that I know involves a lot of negotiations, and the district council person and our council president were certainly involved. But I do want to recognize the work of the New Orleans Building Corporation. A lot goes on behind the scenes to make this happen, and this is a good deal for the state since they've been using our streets all these years at no cost. No, I'm just joking. We get a new parcel for City Hall to be able to build something that's conducive to what the citizens of our city need, and also to have something that is of the highest tech value potentially, and also just something that is a good use of Duncan Plaza. I'm jumping ahead of it because it's going to take a little while before it's a City Hall, but this land swap is so very important. Thank you very much for your work.
You're welcome. We appreciate that, and it is absolutely a team effort. We have a good team over at New Orleans Building Corporation.
Council President Moreno?
Thank you. I mean, at the end of the day, this is something that's been worked on really now for, for decades, from administration to administration. It's, you know, something that has taken a long time to come to fruition, but it really is a deal of a lifetime, a really impactful deal for the City of New Orleans, and also very beneficial for the State of Louisiana and LSCD as well. So to all the parties that have been involved in this, and it's been a very collaborative effort with Taylor Barra, the Commissioner for Division of Administration, of course, LSCD, Hillary Landry has been very impactful in this as well, the mayor's office, the governor's office, of course, the, the city council, but more than anything, Cindy, to you and to your team, to Scott Whitaker as well, you all were the ones that always, you know, kept kind of the, the train on, on its tracks and making sure that we had all of our i's dotted and t's crossed to move this forward. And, and the next step is, you know, moving this on to having the, the Commissioner sign this for his final approval. But like I said, this has been a long time coming, and I'm just very grateful for everyone coming together to, to get it done to benefit not just the city, but also the State of Louisiana. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Cindy, I couldn't say it better. Thank you for all of your work, and I understand that you have a new teammate, Annie McBride. So I, I look forward to working with her in the future. And we do have one comment, Michael Eric Burnside. You got two minutes. Any online comments, Adam? Okay.
Michael Eric Burnside, 2215 Felicity. And I stand here both in opposition and in unhappiness. So the NOPD headquarters has rats, and the NOPD headquarters doesn't have elevators that work, and the NOPD headquarters apparently hasn't had air conditioning for like six months. We are not good property owners. City Hall needs a new City Hall because everybody's bitching about the City Hall they got, and it was built in 1950. We can't take care of the buildings we have. Why are we building new ones? We have a huge amount of space that we do not use, including the old VA Hospital, which is located here and has plenty of parking. We don't use it. There are many other buildings owned by the city we do not use at all. We are very bad property owners, extremely bad, to the point where I, a West Virginia hillbilly who has worshipped the altar of private property for over 50 years of my life, have to say out loud in public that we should become renters and not property owners. And I cannot tell you how hard that hurts me, because ownership comes with not just responsibility, but opportunity and power and the chance for change. But we throw away again and again and again. We come in here and we say, oh, we need new, we need new, we need new, and we don't take care of the old. It matters. I am taken for homeless often. I tried walking down South Liberty Street to Champion Square, and I got stopped by a private security guard when I first came into the city in 2015. We're giving away the right to approach the Caesar Dome when the Super Bowl is here. They will put up fences and they will exclude protesters. In exchange, we're being given land on which we can build a new building that we do not need and cannot take care of.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burnside. All right, I'm going to go ahead and move once the machine comes up. Second. Second to my Council President Moreno. Six yays. Thank you.
Seven.
Seven yays. Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Annie.
Can we all be added as members on this one? So significant.
Yeah, we can add everyone as...
Thank you.
To authors.
We're now on page 30, 39. This is the 1130 matter. We have a legislative grouping. Ordinance calendar number 34,595 by Councilmembers Moreno, Morell, Jeruso, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas, an ordinance calling for an election on November the 5th, 2024, at which the electors of the City of New Orleans shall be asked to approve an amendment to Article 2, Section 2 dash 202 of the Home Rule Charter, adding workers' right to the Municipal Bill of Rights and otherwise to provide with respect thereto, and there is an amendment on top of page 40 by Councilmember Moreno. On page one of Exhibit A, on the third line of the second-to-last unnumbered paragraph, delete the blank line and insert the, excuse me, insert the following, $44,000. Number two, on page one of Exhibit A, delete the last unnumbered paragraph. That is the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let me take up the amendment first. These are some technical corrections and also putting in the exact amount to put this on the ballot as well. So I'll make a motion to adopt the amendment, seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. All in favor? Seven yays, no nays. This is the Workers' Bill of Rights. As you all are aware, we have a city bill of rights that is in the charter, and it lists the, the city's value statements. But until now, well, hopefully, if it passes in the fall, there really been no mention about workers' rights. And so this city council and, and working with different advocates, and of course, the workers of this city, is now putting forth language talking about what we believe workers deserve in the city of New Orleans. So that includes having a, a safe working environment. That includes having the right to have healthcare coverage. That includes equal pay, of course. That includes a living wage. So those are some of the items that are going to be now mentioned, should this ballot measure be approved in the fall. And I think at this critical time, particularly with what's happening at the state capitol right now, where there's been a, a movement for anti-worker legislation, I think it's really important for New Orleans to continue to be that strong voice to support our workers. And so that's why this is important. So long the city, so long in this city, it, it's, it's, it seems like workers have felt that they just don't have a voice. This right here will help give them a voice. With that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Thomas and other council members who'd like to make comments, and then public comment.
No, just thank you for this effort. If we'll hearken back a few decades, we'll remember when the New Orleans City Council actually, actually passed a minimum wage to separate us from this state, the fact that we should be able to control or have some say into what the benefits were and what the workers made. That city council effort that we led over a decade or plus ago was killed in the courts. But I think it's more important now because we're under assault. Workers are under assault throughout this country. And as a member of, of a family, with leading union members like Jake Henry, my mother was CWA, my father, before he was disabled, when he was a long Sherman, Sherman, I think, Councilmember, at least if nothing else, we can go on offense, and I'm sure it'll be challenged in this Davis Bacon and Right to Work state. But I know all of the council members I served with earlier, like Councilmember Carter and Hazur and others, when we passed an ordinance that was unanimous, that was approved, and then to be defeated in the courts, this is another step in the direction to go back and do with Dorothy May Taylors and the Jim Singleton's and the Johnny Jackson's. And even after that, with our ordinance, what we tried to do a decade plus ago. So thank you, guys, for this effort. Let's hopefully the courts realize that workers not only should have rights, but they should be treated right.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember, Council Vice President Morell?
Thank you. Like Councilmember Thomas, I'd like to applaud Council President Moreno, as well as Step Up Louisiana for their efforts to get this to this point. I think what's really interesting, and I think this tack, which is very different than previous tax, is there is always this misconception put forth by people who are anti-worker that the public does not support what the council is doing, that real people don't support unions, don't believe in unions, all they care about is the coffee being 50 cents less or the room being a dollar less. And I think by doing this in this framework, by putting it on the ballot, you're not just saying a message from this council, you're saying a message from the city. You're telling businesses that consumers expect you to treat their workers properly, that those people who are paying for that Starbucks coffee, the people that are renting that hotel room, the people that are interacting with their businesses, that they see these workers, they see what they do, and they also see what businesses are doing to these people. And I would tell you that what I will find very interesting as this effort goes on the ballot is seeing what these businesses do, because it's very dangerous to come out and oppose something like this when the public has shown nationally that they are willing to show their support with their wallets. And like I said, it'll be very interesting to see who shows up against this and what the repercussions are from consumers who have overwhelmingly, in this city and in this country, supported minimum wage, support workers' rights, support equal pay, all these things that government says the public doesn't want. This mechanism that's being done this way lays out all of that in detail and lets the public finally weigh in to say, no, you don't speak for us, we speak for ourselves. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council Vice President. We have public comment. Jack Reno Sweeney, followed by David Williams.
Hello, council members. Jack Reno Sweeney, representing the New Orleans Democratic Socialists of America and All Volunteer Organization of approximately 400 dues-paying members. We're proud to support Step Up's initiative for Workers' Bill of Rights. As the council, as Councilmember Moreno alluded to, in Baton Rouge, the Landry administration has wasted no time trying to tear apart whatever shreds of the social safety net we have left in this state, paying special attention to wiping out any basic protections for workers in the name of extracting wealth from the people to enrich those who are already wealthy and powerful. Every Louisianan with a conscience has a duty to stand up for their neighbors and for themselves to fight back against this onslaught against our rights and our well-being. New Orleans as a city has a special responsibility to lead on the issue of workers' rights, being the economic engine of the whole state and home to hundreds of thousands of workers who are in Landry's crosshairs, but who are also ready and willing to stand up against his efforts. The Workers' Bill of Rights demonstrates our city's commitment to justice, fairness, and equality. Its passage and an affirmative vote in the fall would represent a commitment from the city at every level to building a better Louisiana that goes far beyond Governor Landry's austere and destructive vision for our future. Thank you in particular to Councilmember Moreno for supporting this initiative to lay the bedrock for a movement to defend working Louisianans from extremist and anti-worker policies coming from our state government and its ultra-wealthy cronies trying to keep our economy and our communities in their grip. This is only the beginning of a fight, but when we fight, we win. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. David Williams, followed by Britton Forsyth.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is David Williams. I'm a stockhead at Dollar General and have been employed there for four and a half years. The Workers' Bill of Rights is super important because retail corporations lines their pockets up while paying us pennies. I'm only making bare minimum after four and a half years. A right to a fair living wage will tell the companies that we deserve better and a right to the basic necessities to survive. I'm asking that you don't continue to turn a blind eye to corporate greed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Britton Forsyth, followed by Robert Horton.
Hey, y'all. I'm excited to be here today. Britton Forsyth, I'm the Legislative Coordinator for Step Up Louisiana. I've met with a lot of your offices to talk about this. I really appreciate all of your support. I'm excited to come into this hearing with all council members signed on. You know, this amendment gives New Orleanians a chance to finally say as a city how we believe workers should be treated. I look forward to a public conversation leading up to the ballot to talk about workers' rights and any subsequent policies that, that we're planning to bring up to really, you know, back up this statement. So, you know, thank you all so much. I think uplifting the workers of the city uplifts the whole city, and we state firmly that worker health is public health. So thank you all.
Thank you, Britton. Robert Horton, followed by Nadia Muhammad.
Yes, ma'am. That's right. That's right.
Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
My name is Robert Horton. I reside at 2733 North Prior. I'm here to support the Workers' Bill of Rights, and I thank each and every one of you for at least taking the time to pay attention to this issue. Councilperson Moreno, Morell, Oliver Thomas, and the rest of you, thank you again, you know, because finally, we're putting the people first for a change in this city. You know, we know we live in a city since Hurricane Katrina, we really haven't shifted back from, you know? People are catching hell, still living check to check, living with rent that's out of control and don't know how they're going to make it to work or to school, or keep gas in their vehicles, working two and three jobs, for that matter. Not to mention, there's no kind of boundaries put up on employees with what they impose upon folks outside of their job descriptions. So a Workers' Bill of Rights will bring legal protection for the employees for a change. Essential workers are not just the folks who are doctors in the hospital, but it's the sanitation workers. It's our domestic industry, that fuelless economy here in the city of New Orleans, you know? And so with that being said, those boundaries would also make this town union-friendly for everyone. That way, we can all have some serious protections. And if it's a benefit, it's a win-win for the city of New Orleans overall, because if you've got folks who want to come and move to New Orleans, then it's an invitation to say, we take care of our people here. We don't exploit our people here. And finally, we know we have this issue of crime and safety in the city of New Orleans. When you employ folks and you enhance their quality of life, then we see a decrease in the crime here.
Well said, Mr. Horton. Thank you.
Good morning, Councilmember Moreno and staff. My name is Nadia Muhammad, and I thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to speak on behalf of Workers' Bill of Rights. And as Sister Moreno has, has said, that the rights is to a fair living wage with $15 minimum wage, the right to have a paid leave for medical care and families on vacation, the right to organize a union free from threats, intimidations, or interference. the right to organize a union free from threats, intimidations, or interference, the right to healthcare coverage. These are the Bill, Workers' Bill of Rights. The right to have minimum wages increasingly important if you are a parent or are not. And 22 states are increasing their minimum wages in this year, 2024, but not Louisiana is not one of them. A minimum wage increase in these 22 states going to affect this year, but Louisiana remains one over a dozen states that is keeping the federal minimum wage. The right to a living wage, the right not, not to worry about your light bill, water bill, or worry about your unpaid rent, or having your contents of your home on the sidewalk, which is very embarrassing. The right to have paid medical leave. I went out on medical leave, although I paid for long-term disability trying to get assistance was to no avail. I was one step from sleeping under the bridge. I thank God for family and my sisters that allowed me to stay in their home until I was able to get disability, which, you know, it takes at least a year or more. The right to organize a union in our workplace. We need someone to speak up and to go the distance for us. By having a union is not only investing now as an employee and an employer.
Ms. Muhammad?
Yes.
Start to wrap up, please.
Okay, good.
Your time's up.
All right, well, I'm pleading with the council to accept the Workers' Bill of Rights as we speak, not only for ourselves, but also for the millions of workers in the United States. This Workers' Bill of Rights is the first in our city, first in our state, first in our country, so let's move forward to be the first to sign in this law.
Thank you, Ms. Muhammad. Appreciate you. Anita, any public comment online? No public comment online. I'll make a motion to adopt as amended, seconded by Councilmember Harris. Just waiting on the machines. Seven yays, no nays. Thank you all. Thank you all.
At the top of the page, on this same page, ordinance calendar number 34,574 has been deferred to April 18th. On page 53, I mean 59, number 53, we have motion M. 24,116 by Councilmember Harris, designating the intersection of Aretha Castle Haley Boulevard and Jackson Avenue as the Big Chief Bo Dallas Senior Honorary Intersection pursuant to Section 146, 762 of the Code of the City of New Orleans.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know we have family members, if y'all want to come up. This motion will create an honorary intersection for Big Chief Bo Dallas Senior at the intersection of Jackson and Aretha Castle Haley, where there's a mural honoring his legacy, and we were supposed to have it pulled up, but we do not. Big Chief Bo Dallas became an icon in our city as a whole and among members of the community as Big Chief of the Wild Magnolias. He is also credited with helping to bring the music of the Wild Magnolias into the mainstream, bringing them songs only heard in the city to nationally-recognized hits and securing a record deal for the Wild Magnolias. I'm excited to be able to give this honor to Big Chief Bo Dallas, and I believe we have his family here to speak, so if you'd like to say some words, we'd love to hear from you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Big Queen Rita Dallas with the Wild Magnolias. Bo Dallas Senior is my husband. I'm really here not to talk much on the music part, but his integrity as a man and what he stood for. As the cultural barrier, he was a leader. He brought the music of the Indian culture all around the world. He also loved all Indians. It didn't matter if they was uptown, downtown, crosstown, he loved all Indians, all culture barriers, all people. So this, what we tried to do would be a honor, a honor in his name. This is when he was living. This is nothing he ever talked about. His integrity was in, you know, to put him in the limelight or whatever, he just did what he loved to do.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Big Chief Bo Dallas Junior. The reason why I'm doing this is because I knew who my dad stands for. He just wasn't a mighty gray Indian. He brought music to New Orleans and people to New Orleans from out, all over the world. And I really think if it wasn't for him, a lot of people from across the world would not come to New Orleans, because back then, they would not come to New Orleans for mighty gray Indians, because they was violent. So now that he brought it all over the world, and I'm still picking up his shoes and bringing it all over the world, I want my kids to know that his name didn't go in vain, and I want him to know that people still thinking about him. Even on Jackson Avenue, he used to own a theater, a theater on Jackson Avenue. He had a flower shop on Jackson Avenue. I've seen my dad stop fights. When people like had knives on each other, he'll walk between them and tell them to stop fighting. And these things I've seen in our neighborhoods, Second and Dryds, Jackson Avenue, Louisiana La Salle, I've seen these things with my own eyes, it's nothing nobody told me. Me following in his shadows and his footsteps, I've seen him stop fights and tell people to like, don't pull out no gun. And he'll jump in front of the gun and tell them to put it away and stuff like that for Super Sunday. And so these things I've seen, I think it'd be a real dedication and honor for him to have the intersection of Jackson and Sambalif, I'm sorry.
And with that, he was born and raised on Jackson Avenue. So, you know.
1720 Jackson Avenue.
Yeah, born and raised on Jackson.
Well, thank you so much. Councilmember Thomas.
First of all, a long overdue to, to, to the family, to Lil Bo. The beauty in this is that your father set a standard and a foundation for the culture. On behalf of my big cuz, late Big Chief Rudy Bo-Kai, my little cuz Romeo, Uncle Benny and others, who have upheld the culture, I just want you to know on behalf of your dad, you don't have to take a backseat to anybody. You're one of the most beautiful displays of our culture and what your dad stood for. And, you know, the last time we were together, I came out to watch you perform.
Yes, you did.
You're a king of the culture yourself. What you do now solidifies his effort. The seed didn't fall far from the root, and our culture is alive because of what the standard he set and because of what the family continues, man. He wrote New Orleans for life, Bob.
Thank you.
Yes, he did, and thank you so much.
Well said. Any online comments? Well, I think this is an amazing timing, given St. Joseph's night just passed, and we have rescheduled.
Super Sunday.
Super Sunday on Sunday, so I hope to see y'all out there. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, seconded by Councilmember King. I assume six yays.
Seven.
Seven yays. All right. Thank you so much for being here today. This is wonderful.
And thank y'all for listening.
I have a gift for everybody, so this is one of my albums.
Oh, great. Thank you. We love gifts.
Thank y'all for having us this morning.
Thank you.
We're now at the top of page 56. We have motion M. 24,104 by Councilmember Thomas by request, ratifying, confirming, and approving the mayor's appointment of John Johnson, Vice Diane Alexander, as a member of the city planning commission effective upon approval by the council of the city of New Orleans for a term ended on June 30th, 2020, um, 2030.
Move adoption. I'm trying to move with my machine. Second by Councilmember Green. Vote your machines. We're waiting for the votes. Six yays, no nays, and the motion is adopted. Thank you.
At the bottom of the page, we have motion M. 24,109 by Councilmember Thomas by request, adding the president of the council as a signatory to the Second Amendment of the Non-Emergency Demolition Contract between the city and Dur Heavy Construction LLC and authorizing the president of the council to sign the Second Amendment between the city and Dur Heavy Construction LLC. The Public Works Committee recommended approval.
Adding the council president as his signatory. Move adoption. Second by Councilmember Harris. Six yays, no nays, instrument is adopted.
We're now going to go back to the regular order of the agenda. We're on page 20. We have a legislative grouping communication from Winston Fior, Director of Land Use and Constituent Affairs Liaison, Councilmember Freddie King III, District C, transmitting the mayor's Office of Economic Development's recommendation of disapproval and requesting the scheduling of a public hearing for the following restoration tax abatement application. 939 Iberville Street, French Quarter Apartments Limited Partnership. This was revised on March the 5th, 2024. We have resolution line over R. 2471 by Councilmember King, a resolution approving the RTA renewal application 2014, 1425, 939 Iberville Street. And on the top of page 21, there is an amendment to the resolution, R. 2471, by Councilmember King. Number one, in the second recital, delete R. 2010 and insert R. 11517 in lieu thereof. Number two, in the third recital, after the words recommends denial of the, insert the words renew of the, that is the amendment.
Thinking about it, Clerk, Mr. Barnside.
So my worldview and the governor's are different. I think that people need jobs. The governor thinks the state needs investment, and in the age of AIs and robots, investment does not equal jobs. So back in 2014, maybe things were a little bit different. 2014 was 10 years ago, and it's a long time ago this RTA was started. This is a renewal. The renewals are supposed to happen after five years, which would have been 2019. According to what I read, there's been no DBE participation at all, 0%. From what I read, the jobs are for management jobs, there's no discussion of contract jobs. As I understand the paperwork, the RTA is for $50 million, but the assessor has the building more or less assessed at $25 million, and the RTA will take it back to like $2 million. So this may not matter to a lot of people, but the idea that the rich don't really pay their fair share of property taxes is an ongoing losing battle here in New Orleans. We have a lot of rich people who are actually nonprofits. We have a lot of rich people who are churches. This particular rich individual let his little, let me get this right here, because I don't quite trust myself. French Quarter Apartments Limited Partnership in the Secretary of State's website is lapsed. The gentleman who owns this, or the 80 gentlemen who own this, are an international company that works in Russia and other places, so I don't really think that their upscale apartment is really beneficial to the workers of New Orleans, and I don't really believe they should be getting a tax break.
Steve Storjes.
Good late morning to everybody. In 2014, I represent the owners of the French Quarter Apartments. The owners took a bold move to renovate a nearly 200,000-square-foot empty building into 87, targeted for upscale apartments to try to push the rents to try to create long-term ownership and stability, including paying more taxes. In 2017, the project hit some construction bumps. We achieved 36% DBE compliance. We had to correct some defects from, that happened along the way, which we did in 18 and 19, and then in 20, there was COVID. The project has never achieved more than 80% effective total occupancy, and our rents are substantially less. We're here to request a second period of abatement so that we can continue to try to achieve higher rents over the long term and get to 95% kind of occupancy and ultimately pay far more taxes and do better. And the comments of the prior speaker, ignore the fact that we overachieved on the DBE. We've continued to invest in the property. We had to make $5 million of corrections, which we did, so the building is textbook perfect, and we're proud to have been in New Orleans and try to continue on a long-term basis. So five years from now, we can report back that we've achieved the higher occupancy and the higher rents and paid more taxes, but we'd like some help to try to get there. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Seeing none, move to the next speaker, Mr. Scott. Sorry, I can't make out the last name.
Good afternoon or midday, Council Scott Hewitt, on behalf of the ownership of 939 Iberville. I'm kind of seconding what Mr. Stogel stated, but succinctly, the long-term benefits of granting the renewal of the RTA will benefit the city far more financially than denying the renewal. It is a, this was an aggressive project, and it's been an aggressive investment, and long-term, allowing, you know, this kind of niche development to maintain high rents and to continue investing in the city, that the tax burden on the ownership following the, the abatement period will significantly increase and will far outweigh the value of the abatement that is, or the renewal of the abatement that is sought here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the dais? Any online comments? At this time, make a motion to, make a motion. It's amended, I'm sorry. Second by Councilmember Green. Now I move to adopt the resolution as amended. Six yays, no nays, the motion as amended has been approved. Resolution as amended has been approved.
We're now on top of page 22. The HDLC appeal of 517 Broadway Street has been deferred to April 4th. On top of page 23, all matters. The HDLC appeal of 2502 Jefferson Avenue has been deferred to April 4th. The HDLC appeal of 27 Nukem Boulevard has been deferred to April 4th. We're now on top of page 24. We have a legislative grouping, the CBD HDLC Appeal of Wendy Kerrigan Adelera Design, requesting to appeal the Central Business District Historic District Landmark Commission's decision of de facto denial of the retention of installation of inappropriate permanent roll-down storm shutters at penthouse window openings of a contributing-rated three-story mixed-use building in deviation of a certificate of appropriateness for the property located at 333 St. Joseph Street. We have motion M. 24,114 by Councilmember Harris, denying the applicant's request of the retention of installation of inappropriate permanent roll-down storm shutters at penthouse windows openings of a contributing-rated three-story mixed-use building in deviation of a certificate of appropriateness for the property located at 333 St. Joseph Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Eleanor, will you brief us on the HDLC report?
Yes. The HDLC guidelines for shutters and storm preparedness allow for minimally obtrusive and historically appropriate permanent storm shutters, which are typically temporary wood, metal, or fabric panels that are deployed only when storms are approaching. By utilizing minimally visible pre-installed fasteners, the By utilizing minimally visible pre-installed fasteners, the openings are able to be protected when necessary with little to no negative impact on the existing building's historic fabric or visual character. Based on this, the high visibility of the storm shutters that were installed from the surrounding public right-of-way, and because this work was completed without HDLC approval, staff recommended denial of the request for the retention as installed. Staff also recommended the applicant consider other less intrusive methods to achieve the desired opening protection that can be reviewed and approved at the staff level. At their meeting of February seventh, two thousand twenty-four, a motion made by Matt Norton to deny the application failed five to one, and the commission was unable to take action on this application. The property owners were aware they are under the jurisdiction of the HDLC and had been working closely with staff regarding other exterior work to the property. The HDLC urges the City Council to not reward property owners who knowingly perform work in violation of the design guidelines and seek forgiveness rather than permission, as doing so makes achieving compliance in the local historic districts an even greater challenge.
Thank you, Eleanor. This motion denies the appeal made in order to retain the roll-down shutter installed on the penthouse windows of three thirty-three Saint Joseph. So go ahead and move. Seconded by Councilmember King. Six sheaves, thank you.
We're now on top of page twenty-five. All Matters. We have the university area off-street parking for twenty-seven Nukem Boulevard has been deferred to April fourth. We have zoning docket two twenty-four has been deferred to April fourth. We're on top of page, we're on page twenty-six. You have zoning docket nine twenty-four Xavier University of Louisiana requesting a zoning change from an EC educational campus district to a C-three heavy commercial district. This is it, right here. No, not that I know of. Just ask, she's right there. Amendment to the text of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to exempt this property from the EC Enhancement Corridor Design Overlay District and the HUC Historic Urban Corridor Use Restriction Overlay District on square seven seventy-two. A portion of Lot X proposed to be re-subdivided into Lot X-one in the first municipal district bounded by South Carrollton Avenue, Palmetto Street, Short Street, and Interstate Ten. Municipal address thirty-eight oh-one South Carrollton Avenue. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval, for modified approval. Approving the zoning change to a C-three district, but limiting it to an area not to exceed ten thousand square feet, and approving the removal of this property from the EC Design Overlay District and the HUC Use Restriction Overlay District. And there is the motion. We have motion M twenty-four one seventeen by Councilmember Harris. Approving the modified approval for thirty-eight oh-one South Carrollton Avenue for zoning docket nine twenty-four. That is the motion. We need to suspend the rules to receive this motion.
Okay, I'll move to suspend the rules. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Six sheaves.
Say seven.
Seven years.
Now we need to suspend the rules to add it.
I'll move to suspend the rules to add it. Seconded by Council President Moreno. Everyone's unanimous vote?
And now you can vote on, or you can talk about.
Okay, thank you. This motion would approve Xavier's request to change the zoning surrounding the campus from an EC educational campus district to a C-three heavy commercial district to allow for the relocation of an existing billboard. Xavier is also seeking a text amendment request to exempt the property from the EC and HUC overlay districts. Stephen, can you brief us on the CPC?
Sure, I will. And quickly, I want to just introduce you to Sabine Leveyo, who's on the end. She's going to handle some of these zoning items in future meetings. Just want to
Great, thank you.
make that introduction, and of course Rachel Burke, who handles other items. This is a request by Xavier University, which is building a dorm on a part of their campus where there's currently a billboard. Xavier doesn't own the billboard. It's, there's a servitude with the billboard company. The billboard can no longer exist due to the presence of the dorm. And so what Xavier is proposing to do is to move the billboard location to this edge of its campus near the on-ramp to I-ten. The planning commission is supportive of this. They, you know, support Xavier's growth and support this effort to accommodate the needs of the billboard and the billboard owner while also building a new dorm that will serve its population. I will say that they recommend the modification of keeping the rezoning as limited an area as needed to accommodate the billboard. And so there's a modification that the boundaries of the area to be rezoned are no more than ten thousand square feet, but in general, they're supportive and recommend approval.
Thank you, Stephen. We have three comment cards. Todd Gennardo, followed by Michael Eric Burnside.
Good afternoon, Todd Gennardo, two oh-one Saint Charles Avenue, Suite thirty-nine twenty, here on behalf of the applicant, Xavier University. Want to first just start by thanking the staff for working with us, CPC staff for working with Xavier on both the dorm, the garage project, and now this last piece of the puzzle, moving the existing billboard. Also, want to thank Councilmember Harris and her staff for working with us throughout this lengthy project to move what's a very important project for the university forward. We're here just to ask you to accept the recommendation of the City Planning Commission. The modification that the commission requested is perfectly fine with Xavier University. We are more than happy to limit the lot size. And we're here just to answer any questions or address any concerns that you all might have.
Thank you. Michael Eric Burnside, followed by David Halpern.
Michael Eric Burnside, twenty-two fifteen. So I guess I will acknowledge the great zoning gods in the sky and say thank you for the limitation to the ten thousand square feet. I'm not good at saying really nice things, as Councilman Green has occasionally reminded me. So I will go on and say perhaps a negative thing. The billboard was a servitude that somebody got a hundred and fifty K for back in the nineteen nineties. It seems to me that it's possible to buy the servitude from whoever owns it and just get rid of the billboard altogether. But if you're not willing to buy the servitude and not willing to buy the billboard in order to get rid of it, it seems to me that the billboard could be hung from your dorm because, quite frankly, it's a rather small billboard. There's Google Map pictures and all the rest of it. So it seems odd that a serious zoning change needs to be done to accommodate a billboard. There seems to me to be other answers to this situation. But I am grateful that the great billboard creators in the sky were kind enough to limit everything to ten thousand square feet.
David Halpern.
Madam Chairman, members of the council, David Halpern, twenty-six Swan Street, New Orleans, Louisiana. I can only echo the comments made by Mr. Gennardo. We represent Lamar Advertising, who is the billboard operator on the location. They owned it, and their predecessor owned it since nineteen ninety-eight. It's been a great billboard. There's no reason to change it. Xavier approached Lamar and said, look, we need to develop this property. They've been a great partner with us. They do great things for the city of New Orleans. We can't possibly stand in their way. The only thing we can do is agree with them to move our billboard to another location. We spent a lot of time with the City Planning Commission staff trying to find a location, and this is the only one that we're able to find that is not too close to the neighbors, it's close enough to other commercial operations, and is appropriate under all circumstances. So we appreciate the staff's efforts. We appreciate the City Planning Commission's vote in favor of it, and we ask that you support the recommendations that you've already received.
Thank you. Any online comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and move. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Six sheaves, thank you.
We're now on top of page twenty-seven. We have zoning docket twenty-four, twelve twenty-four has been deferred to April fourth. At the bottom of the page, zoning docket sixteen twenty-four has been deferred to April eighteenth. On top of page twenty-eight, All Matters. Zoning docket seventeen twenty-four has been deferred to April eighteen. Zoning docket eighteen twenty-four has been deferred to April eighteenth. On top of page twenty-nine, the legislative grouping. Zoning docket twenty-one twenty-four has been deferred to April fourth. Motion M twenty-four one fifteen has been deferred to April fourth. On top of page thirty, we have a legislative grouping, street name change, four twenty-three Lincoln Beach Boulevard, requesting the consideration of renaming of Hayne Boulevard from Paris Road to Industrial Canal and from Industrial Canal to Sunno Nights Drive, formerly Press Drive, to Lincoln Beach Boulevard. The recommendation of the City Planning Commission being for approval. We have motion line over M twenty-three five sixty-six by Councilmembers Thomas and Green. Motion stating that the favorable recommendation of approval by the City Planning Commission for street name change, four twenty-three, is hereby granted.
City Planning Board, if you guys are going to give your report.
Sure. This is a request on behalf of New Orleans East Restoration Project for a street name change for the entirety of Hayne Boulevard from Paris Road to I-ten and from the I-ten to Sunno Nights Drive to Lincoln Beach Boulevard. The City Planning Commission found that this request is in compliance with the City Planning Commission's street name change policy and thus recommends approval of the request. It should be noted that part of this roadway is considered LA forty-one, and there are signage impacts to the state roadway that will need to be coordinated between LA DoDDT and the Department of Public Works.
Councilmember Green.
First, how do you all like that name, Sunno Nights Drive? Made possible by the New Orleans City Council. Thank you very much. But look, I just wanted to comment on the fact that the reason that I am working with Councilman Thomas on this is that Hayne Boulevard does go across the back of Punter Train Park. But I'm just pleased that the City Planning Commission is recommending approval as we look forward to the Lincoln Beach development, the restoration of a historic site. I'm pleased that people, included in my district, will be able to drive on a thoroughfare that's named after a historic site, and is also going to help us to remember all of the positives that went on there and that we're going to make happen in the future. So I'm pleased to join Councilman Thomas. Certainly also a part of the district, from down Monroe to Alabama Street is also included in District D. But the most important thing is to say that for those people who are going to drive that thoroughfare, seeing this name, it should be a reminder of the fact that the city has revitalized a very important asset in our city. And I look forward to many years of driving on that Boulevard and celebrating that fact, and thank you for your work.
If you've already said it, it's no need for it to be said again. Move adoption. Seconded by Councilmember Green. Lincoln Beach Name Change. Thank you to all the community members. Move adoption, vote your machines. Ay, 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 all right.
We're now on top of page thirty-one, All Matters. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand one ninety-eight has been deferred to May second. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand two seventy-seven has been deferred to April fourth. On top of page thirty-two, Legislative Grouping. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five fifty-seven by Councilmember King. An ordinance to amend and reordain Article twenty-one of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, ordinance number four thousand two sixty-four MCS as amended by ordinance number twenty-six thousand four thirteen MCS and subsequent amendments to consider regulations for hours of operation and density for parklets that are on blocks that are not zoned commercial or mixed use from corner to corner, and to consider amending the district column associated with the permitted temporary use for parklets in Table twenty-one dash three in Section twenty-one point eight point C, and to amend Section twenty-one point eight point C point sixteen, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto zoning docket number ninety twenty-three. I'll also read his other one, but we have to vote on them separately. We have ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five sixty-eight by Councilmember King by request. An ordinance to amend and reordain Sections one forty-six dash five ninety-two, one forty-six dash five ninety-five, and one forty-six dash five ninety-nine of the city code to allow for more than one parklet per block face, to allow for both a parklet and a sidewalk cafe at same location to provide for a temporary waiver of the initial parklet right-of-way usage fee, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Councilmembers, I need to recuse because my husband has a parklet.
On both of them, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four five fifty-seven, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We passed a motion to approve park, to approve parklet CZO amendments last month. This legislation, this legislative grouping includes the corresponding CZO amendment ordinance as well as the companion code amendment ordinance. Motion to adopt. Seconded by Councilmember Moreno. Five a's, six sheaves, if that counts, and one recusal.
Okay. Now you need to vote on thirty-four thousand five sixty-eight.
Councilmember, we have one online comment.
Sorry, forgot the online comment.
This is from Kip Holler on behalf of the Fawbuck Marini Improvement Association. He says, as parking continues to be problematic throughout our historic residential neighborhoods, the Fawbuck Marini Improvement Association strongly opposes an amended ordinance allowing for more than one parklet per block face. There should be a density limitation preventing more than one parklet per block, not block face. Additionally, we are opposed to allowing double-dipping. A commercial establishment should be entitled to one or the other, either a parklet or a sidewalk cafe, but not both. We must respect the public right-of-way and ensure residents have sufficient areas to walk and park. Furthermore, we are against providing for any temporary waiver fees. Those that are already legally established previously received a waiver move forward with enforcement and a collection of due revenues as intended. Do not allow new parklets without fees, which would only foster bad actors not following the rules, having no skin in the game.
Thank you. I make a motion to adopt. Seconded by Councilmember Morel. Where is that I guy? All right, five a's, one recusal. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We're now on top of page thirty-three. And Councilmember, because this amendment has been for the public to see, I will not read it into the rest. We have Legislative Grouping, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five fifty-nine by Councilmember King. An ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit a hotel over five thousand square feet in floor area and HUMU Historic Urban Neighborhood Mixed Use District on square one fifty. Lots A and B or one and two, proposed Lot A dash one and the fifth municipal district bounded by Red Allen Way, Test Street, Homer Street, and Nunaz Street. Municipal address is four oh-one through four oh-five Red Allen Way. And otherwise to provide with respect thereto, and the amendment, there is an amendment.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Any comments from the DAS? No comments from the DAS, online comment? All right, make a motion to amend. Seconded by Councilmember Green. Six sheaves, seven, six sheaves, no nays.
Six yeas, seven, six yeas, no names?
Seven yeas.
Seven yeas, seven yeas. I just want to make a motion to adopt as amended. Seconded by Councilmember Moreno. All right. All right, ayes have it, no names. Motion's adopted as amended.
We're now on page thirty-six. We have a Legislative Grouping. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five sixty-six by Councilmember King. An ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit a hotel over five thousand square feet in floor area in a HUMU Historic Urban Neighborhood Mixed Use District located on Square one fifty, lots B twenty-three and twenty-four, Prop. Lot twenty-three A in the Fifth Municipal District bounded by Test Street, Homer Street, Red Allen Way, and Nunaz Street. Municipal addresses eight twenty through eight twenty-eight, Test Street, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto, zoning docket ninety-four twenty-three. And the amendment has been published on the agenda for ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five sixty-six.
All right, Madam Clerk. For this conditional use for bring-back development to the prominent corner in Algiers that has been vacant, been a vacant tire dumping ground for far too long, this is a true mixed-use development with retail and office space for local businesses, long-term apartments, and a limited number of hotel rooms. The owner is an established local developer with a lot of potential to improve New Orleans. Developers team, as well as our office, has been working closely with neighbors to carve out provisos that will help preserve quality of life for those residents living in the immediate vicinity. These provisos are reflected in the amendments within these Legislative Groupings. So I make a motion to amend once again. Seconded by Councilmember Morel. Seven yeas, the motion's amended. Make a motion to adopt. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Seven yeas, no names, motion's adopted as amended. Ordinance, pardon me.
We're now on the bottom of page forty. Legislative Grouping, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five ninety-six has been deferred to April fourth. On top of page forty-one, the amendment to ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five ninety-six has been deferred to April fourth. On page forty-two, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five ninety-eight by Councilmember King by request. An ordinance to amend and reordain Section one sixty-six dash one fifty-four of the Code of the City of New Orleans relative to violations and penalties to incorporate changes in the Louisiana Revised Statute thirty-three one three seven five as amended by twenty-twenty-three Louisiana Act number three oh four HB two seven six, including increases of maximum monetary to provide with respect thereto. Quality of Life Committee recommended approval.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to adopt. Seconded by Councilmember Moreno. Have six yeas and no names. Motion's adopted. Ordinance.
Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand five ninety-nine by Councilmember Harris by request. An ordinance to amend and reordain Section eighty-four dash twenty-three of the Code of the City of New Orleans relative to general enforcement to incorporate changes to the Louisiana Revised Statute thirty-three one three seven five as amended by twenty-twenty-three Louisiana Acts number three oh four HB two seven six, including increase of maximum monetary penalty and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. The Quality of Life Committee recommended approval.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, increase maximum municipal fines as a result of legislation authorized by State Representative Landry, passed in twenty-twenty-three, which is Act three of four. These ordinances align with prior council action, which last year raised the general administrative hearing penalty to match L.A. R.S. thirty-three thirteen seventy-five. The three ordinances, along with the previous ordinance authored by Councilmember King, seek to align the maximum monetary penalty, which is now a thousand dollars for first offense, two thousand dollars for second offense. These ordinance close the loop on the outdated penalties for unlawful, illegal vending activities and historic district landmark violations, and allow these specific sections to be in line with the City Code. Are there any online comments? Any comments from the dais? Okay, I'll go ahead and move to adopt twenty-four, and then we can go through the twenty-five and twenty-six. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Five yeas, six yeas.
We're now on top of page forty-three. We have ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six hundred by Councilmember Harris by request. An ordinance to amend and reordain Section eighty-four dash one thirty-three of the Code of the City of New Orleans relative to general enforcement to incorporate changes to the Louisiana Revised Statute thirty-three one three seven five as amended by twenty-twenty-three Louisiana Acts number three oh four HB two seven six, including increases of maximum monetary penalty and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
I've gone ahead and moved. Seconded by Councilmember King. Six yeas.
At the bottom of the page, we have ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six oh one by Councilmember Harris by request. An ordinance to amend and reordain Section one dash thirteen of the Code of the City of New Orleans relative to general enforcement to incorporate changes to the Louisiana Revised Statute thirty-three one three seven five as amended by twenty-twenty-three Louisiana Acts number three oh four HB two seven six, including increase of maximum monetary penalty and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
I moved. I need a second. Seconded by Council President Moreno. Six yeas. Thank you.
On top of page forty-four, we have ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six oh two by Councilmember Green by request. An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, for a term greater than one year for the public purpose of developing a comprehensive safety plan to address traffic safety on the roadways of the City of New Orleans as more fully detailed in a cooperative endeavor agreement form attached hereto as Exhibit A and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Members of the council, we've already previously approved a cooperative endeavor agreement involving the City of New Orleans and the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration. This is simply a technical correct, a technical change that is being made because the U.S. DOTD made a technical correction to the existing agreement. I ask for your approval of this technical change.
Councilmember, I have one online comment.
Go.
This is from Michelle Schlafly. She says, "Please remove Sarah Porteous from your paperwork as the Director of Public Works. She has not been in that position for some time. I must congratulate Dan Jatras and Jennifer Rulie on their efforts to continue the study of traffic fatalities in New Orleans. But in past performance, but if past performance is any indication of what their plan is, then this fund dedication by the City of two hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars to match the U.S. DOT's seven hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars should come with a strict timeline, study mythology, and a comprehensive neighborhood participation engagement timeline that spans more than two meanings over six weeks. They should be able to account for nearly one million dollars noted here for their study. I also hope that this amount of money they could figure out, for this amount of money, they could figure out a way to maintain the city's current bike lanes and keep them free of debris without dependency on volunteerism. The CEA could be a very good thing, but while they say their goal is safe streets, their plan is to add more protected bike lanes and remove our, remove or diet vehicle lanes, and I worry that there will be nearly no engagement with neighborhoods this time. Everyone wants safe streets for all who use them. However, when roadways are removed or reduced by one lane in favor of bike lanes without properly informing those who will be affected, as has happened with the Marconi next to City Park and the bike lanes in Algiers, no one wins. Lack of transparency has been a pitfall for bicycling enthusiasts." That's it for the comments.
Members, if there are no comments from the dais, I move for approval. Yes, seconded. Was it seconded already? By Councilmember Jeruso. Members, please vote your machines. All in favor? Six yeas, no names. Thank you.
We're now on top of page forty-five. We have ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six oh three by Councilmember Jeruso by request. An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter Amendment Number Two to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans, the National Parent Leadership Institute, and the New Orleans Business Alliance relative to provide twenty weeks of three-hour sessions once a week to parents in order to help parents become better leaders for their children and families, to modify the provisions thereof, and extend the term thereof for an additional two years, nine months, as more fully set forth in Amendment Number One form attached hereto as Exhibit One, and made a part hereof and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
I've moved for approval, seconded by President Moreno. Members, please vote your machines. Five yeas, no names.
We're now on top of page forty. We have ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six oh five by Councilmember Harris by request. An ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of New Orleans and the Downtown Development District for the City of New Orleans for a term greater than one year for the public purpose of redesigning and redeveloping Harmony Circle, the circular park located within Tavali Circle, a traffic roundabout in downtown New Orleans situated at the intersection of St. Charles Avenue, Andrew Higgins Boulevard, and Howard Avenue in the City of New Orleans as more fully detailed in a cooperative endeavor agreement form attached hereto as Exhibit A and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The DDD wishes to extend the current one-year CEA to redeveloped Harmony Circle for use as a venue for public events and for the public display of art or exhibitions created or commissioned by local organizations, and then have, and that have significance to the city, including its culture, history, people, and economy. The DDD intends the redevelopment of Harmony Circle from funding their variety of public sources, including the capital outlay program of the state of Louisiana, philanthropic donations, and other sources of private capital. The successful redevelopment of Harmony Circle will provide substantial benefits to downtown residents, workers, visitors, and property owners. And we have one comment card from our friend Jared Berset.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. It's a different view from this side. I hope you all are well. And Jared Berset, two oh one St. Charles Avenue, thirty-nine twelve. And as Councilmember Harris eloquently spoke, look, we have, DDD has a long tradition of partnering with the city and stakeholders to manage the, the public spaces within the district. And this CEA just extends it to a five-year cooperative endeavor agreement. The current agreement ends, I believe, tomorrow. And to advance this, this vision, we collectively, along with the councilmembers, specifically Councilmember Harris, President Morel, and Senator Royce Duplessis, along with the mayor, provided letters of support for the capital outlay process of House Bill Two, secured four point five million, five hundred thousand for planning, which in RFP went on to the streets, and a selection is pending. We had the assistance of Michael Karim, your Director of Parks and Parkways. And so the request of CEA extension is necessary for the completion pending the design and construction of the project.
Thank you so much. Are there any online comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and move. It's so cold, our buttons aren't working. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. I need one more vote. Five yeas. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Berset.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Thank you, council.
At the bottom of the page, we have ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six oh six by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, and Harris. An ordinance to amend, ordinance number twenty-nine thousand seven thirty-five MCS as amended, entitled on ordinance, providing an operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-four, to appropriate unassigned fund balance to the mayor's Office of Workforce Development Youth Work Summer Jobs Program, to provide for an increase in youth participation and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As part of our effort to make sure kids are safe this summer and are working, we felt important to take money that was not allocated in this year's budget, which had been in the last, and make sure that there's enough youth opportunity this, this summer, particularly in making sure that there's jobs available and the city is paying for that work. So along with Councilmember Moreno, Councilmember Harris, and I think everybody who will vote will want to be added as co-authors on this, I move for adoption. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Moreno's seconded, but you are right, Mr. Burnside. And I would note in support.
Yes, bitter old man that I am, I'm trying to learn from Councilperson Green. It's important for me to come up at least in support once. I think that kids should have jobs. I think they should get paid. I think the city should provide the money, and I think this is a good deal. So thank all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside.
Don't die a shock.
Thank you, Mr. Burnside. All right. Move, seconded. I think there are six yeas, and we'll move forward to the next accompanying ordinance.
We're now on top of page forty-seven. It's five. Who didn't vote? Okay, nine six.
There you go.
On top of page forty-seven, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six oh seven by Councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, and Harris. An ordinance to amend, ordinance number twenty-nine thousand seven thirty-six MCS as amended, entitled on ordinance, providing an operating budget of expenditure for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-four, to appropriate funds to the mayor's Office of Workforce Development Youth Work Summer Jobs Program, to provide an increase of youth participate and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
This is a companion ordinance. I move for approval. Seconded by President Moreno. I'm waiting on one more, I think. Thank you. Six yeas, no names.
At the bottom of the page, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six oh eight by Councilmember Thomas by request. An ordinance to amend and reordain Article seventeen of the Chapter one fifty-four of the Code of the City of New Orleans to collect a fee for inspection certificates set forth in Section one fifty-four dash one three oh seven, to reduce the fee collected by the Department of Public Works from the operator of permitted satellite inspection stations for inspection certificates for all vehicles except commercial vehicles and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
What a benefit. Some, some operators are making a greater profit dealing with the city. Reduces the city's take to twelve fifty. There, the satellite operators will increase their profit. Move adoption. Move adoption. The machine, Madam Clerk.
Who's going to second? Councilmember?
May, maybe nobody wants to second. Yeah.
Councilmember Thomas.
I'm noticing some of these seconds are slow depending on, anyway, I don't want to get in one of them moves. Move by me, seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. We don't want it to be a conspiracy now. Move adoption. All ayes. Ayes have it, any against. Ayes have it. So ordered.
On top of page forty-eight. Thirty-four thousand six oh nine by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Harris, and Thomas by request and ordinance to ordain section seventy dash four fifteen point two eight two point one of the code of the city of New Orleans relative to ensuring adequate drainage infrastructure funding consistent with the 2019 fair share agreement and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Members, I know everybody will remember the fair share that worked out by Mayor Cantrell in ensuring that as a result of tourism getting certain benefits, that then there would be money that went to infrastructure into the city. However, for whatever reason, there was not the codification of the five million dollars that was supposed to go annually to sewage and water board as part of that, and so this ordinance takes care of that and ensures that on a perpetual basis, because of the fair share allocation, five million dollars will go to sewage and water board on annual basis. So I've moved, seconded by Councilmember Harris. You put in a yellow card? I didn't get one. Sorry, I did not, that time, I just didn't get one. But Mr. Burnside? Sorry.
Counsel, I have to say that the words "that time" imply the previous times perhaps yet. Okay, so my name is Mike Warwick Burnside. I live at twenty-two fifteen Felicity. And I went to the governor's task force for sewage and water board one week ago today in the, in the evening. And they had another meeting today starting at ten AM, which hopefully somebody sent a staff member too to keep track of what's going on there. Changes in the air. It may be like Entergy. You may have a Sevacuro. You may have a sewage and water bird oil or something. I mean, you gotta be careful. So I read this, didn't really understand, which is fine because I'm getting old. But I do want to point out a couple of things about infrastructure that's already known, but I want to like put it out there in public, one of which, of course, is not everybody pays for drainage. I think we all understand that. How do we get all people to pay for drainage is a legitimate political question that you guys should be wrestling with and should have like staff focused on, or maybe even some sort of little group to get together. Because depending on the numbers that the sewage and water board task force dealt with in public a week ago, between forty and sixty percent of the city apparently is not paying anything. So if forty to sixty percent of the city is not paying anything, the people who are paying things, it's kind of like fee waivers for Nord. You know, it's like, why should I pay if you're not paying, right? And we would like to have drainage, so it would be good if everybody paid. As far as the rest of it goes, some of the other numbers that came out were staggering. I don't know if the numbers were true, but a gentleman said that back in 2017, we paid such and such money for such and such catch basins, and it came out to two hundred and fifty dollars each for a catch basin to be cleaned in 217. And then somebody else came out with numbers that said, well, the city just signed a contract for the ten million dollars, and you're only going to get five thousand catch basins. I hope that that's false, because if it's true, that's two thousand dollars per catch basin. So things are getting ridiculous, and somebody somewhere needs an auditor, and somebody somewhere needs a, oh, I don't know. The legislative branch, whose power is the purse of the public, needs to beef up its technical staff so that it can keep track of what money is being spent, who is getting it, and why the city's not really getting what it needs in return.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Burnside. I've moved Councilmember Harris, the seconded, with seven zero. Thank you, members.
At the bottom of the page, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six ten has been withdrawn.
So ordered.
At the top of page forty-nine, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six eleven by Councilmember Harris, an ordinance to temporarily waive certain fees, permit fees, and requirements within and around the Lion Center located at six twenty-four Louisiana Avenue, New Orleans, Louisiana, in conjunction with Benjamin Franklin Elementary Middle School Family Dance on Friday, March first, from four PM to ten PM, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Thank, uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Because this event took place before we adopted new rules regarding Nord fee waivers, we need to pass this ordinance to allow for, for fifty percent of the fees to be waived. I can't talk today. I'm going to move. Seconded by Councilmember Jeruso. Five yeas. We're good.
On top of page fifty, we have ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six twelve has been deferred to April fourth. On top of page fifty-one, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six thirteen by Councilmember King, an ordinance to temporarily waive certain fees, permit fees, and requirements within and around the nine hundred block of Nord Robinson Street blank in New Orleans, Louisiana, in conjunction with Carrie Fatman Hunter Repass Event on Saturday, February twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, from six AM to eight PM to specify the duration and boundaries of said waiver and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This was introduced on March seventh in relates to a funeral event that occurred on February twenty-fourth. The funeral event was for a beloved member of our musical community. The waiver was promised to the family prior to the passage of the ordinance and introduced prior to the mayor signing the ordinance. So I move to adopt.
And thank you, Councilmember King, beloved member of our cultural community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Seconded by Councilmember Harris. Seven yeas, no nays. Motion to adopt.
At the bottom of the page, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six fourteen by councilmembers Jeruso, Moreno, Harris, Green, Thomas, Morell, and King, an ordinance to amend and reordain section seventy dash four fifteen point three two seven, seventy dash four fifteen point three two eight, seventy dash four fifteen point three twenty-nine of the code of the city of New Orleans to change the name of the Affordable and Workforce Housing Gap Financing Fund to expand the purpose of the fund, to require annual appropriations to the fund, to require additional reporting, to require the appointment of an advisory committee, and establish the duties and rules for such committee and otherwise to provide with respect thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think Councilmember Harris referred to this as a belt and suspenders at the last meeting, and that's how we characterize this as well. It simply lays out in case the charter change happens not to pass, how the city would create an affordable housing fund, how it would be funded in its first year, for what purposes it would be funded for in its first year, and the process and procedure by which it would go through in its first year. I think we have one online comment, and I know I have three comment cards here. So Mr. Burnside, Cheryl, I don't know where she, there you are, and Joe.
Hi. So gap, gap financing is different than soft seconds, and I understand that. But the soft seconds on the website for the cities from 2019, they have X dollars, they divide by X amount of money. You get fifty people that got soft seconds in the last five years. So a lot of things aren't necessarily belt and suspenders. Some things just don't hold things up. So the next thing is that you, you're buying different things, right? But you don't have the things you're buying matching the things you're needing. So you need one bedrooms, but you've got too many two bedrooms. You need efficiencies. Okay? You can talk to Andre Nico Morris. I realize that she has supporters and she has detractors, but she's done a lot of work, and she has a lot of numbers, and it would not be amiss for you to send your staff to talk to her. Because we're buying stuff we don't need, and we need stuff we're not buying. So as far as gap financing goes, we've done a couple of affordable housing things recently. I've sent you emails. The affordable housing is coming out to about like three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars a house. This is the average cost of a normal house. This is an affordable housing. Well, we're doing subsidizing rent for a few years, and then after forty-five years or thirty years or whatever the case is, it'll go to market housing, which is what it's being built for in the first place. It's being built as market housing that's then going to be renovated and sold on the open market. So we need to figure out a way to get people really poor person housing and not middle-class housing. And I realize that that's a big, long, complicated argument, and I'm willing to lose it, but I'm not willing to not have it. Because we're spending a lot of money already, and we're not getting a heck of a lot for it.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Valerie, and then Mr. Heron Mueller.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Cheryl Elaine Valerie. I'm from Carlton Halygro. I haven't been to the center in a while. Being homeless down the street at the house, it's kind of hard. Affordable housing is something that we need. I just had a birthday.
A COVID birthday, March eleventh.
I'm at seventy-one years of age. I want to go home to my community, back to Rogers with Council on Agent. He has a house behind the center. I need a place to stay. I need it now, physical and mentally. I need it now. I hope you guys can do something. I'm right down the street. I walked down here, about to walk back. I might go out at the mirror again. She wasn't in early. Julius wasn't in. Everybody knows me. Oliver, I'm always on the radio. Doctor, that's what's here. I was glad to see Doctor you. I'm like, I just want you guys to do the right thing. I got a son who needs a place to stay. He has a job. I've been wanting to go back to the soap dome and work some more, do my artwork. I'm just tired. And it's time for someone to get off their butts and do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. I, I know you were here either a meeting or two ago, and we tried to get somebody from Office of Community Development down here, so maybe if you hang out a little bit longer today, we'll see if we can get somebody to come talk to you. Absolutely. All right. Mr. Heron Mueller?
Thank you. Joe Heron Mueller, Unity of Greater New Orleans. I want to thank Councilmember Jeruso and everybody here today. Thank you for your work on this and for continuing to address the need for more affordable housing in our community. As multiple speakers today have highlighted, the need for, affordable housing is a critical, and there's a ground, there's a groundswell of people in this community attested to by the comments today, by a meeting that I attended earlier around homelessness, where the lack of affordable housing was pinpointed as the, the major driver in homelessness. So we're glad to see y'all working continually diligently on this, and we hope that as this ordinance is enacted and progressed, that special attention to special populations is given, because people who are homeless, people who are really below thirty percent of AMI are especially at risk of suffering the greatest detriments of a lack of affordable housing. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I know Councilmember Harris has worked hard on that issue too. Councilmember Green?
The only thing that I want to say is, I want people to do an analysis, a deeper analysis, of those who are unhoused, because the housing first or the housing only policy is something that has to be discussed. Addiction and mental challenges have to be discussed, and they have to be in there. I don't believe that the vast majority of those who are unhoused are unhoused because of affordable housing, and I think that we're doing them a disservice. We're not looking at the people who are transient, the people who choose to not be inside, and the people who have drug addictions that prevent them from doing so. The only thing that I'm asking is when we use certain phrases, terms, make sure that they don't become rhetoric. I have an opportunity to talk to a number of people who are unhoused, and I will tell you that it's not because they lost a house, it's not because they couldn't afford an apartment, it's because there are challenges that are going on, and sometimes the challenges are deep within. I think that we're doing a disservice sometimes. I just want to leave it at that. I also look forward to supporting any measures that create housing to support our citizens, including measures to help people get to the homeownership level at a larger level than we have in our city right now, which is the real long-term solution to the affordable housing crisis that we have, if it is, if it is in fact, a crisis.
Councilmember Jeruso, I have the one online comment.
Yes, thank you.
This is from Stephen Kennedy. He says, I'm writing today to express my support for ordinance number thirty-four six fourteen, the Affordable Housing Fund. It's critically important to create a funding source to help increase the production of accessible, affordable housing throughout the city. Many families across the city are cost burdened, paying over fifty percent of their household incomes on housing, which makes it extremely difficult to pull them ups, pull themselves up by the bootstraps. Assisting families with becoming homeowners will hopefully help some families begin to build wealth, since homeownership has been a foundation for many towards that end. Nearly fifty-five percent of the city's residents are renters, which make, which makes it also imperative that the production of affordable rental units is increased. Helping tackle the problem of affordable rental housing across our city, especially in high opportunity, opportunity neighborhoods, will help bring stability for working families. I want to personally thank you, each of you, for your commitment towards affordable housing, and a special thanks to Councilmember Leslie Harris, who has taken the lead on advocating for affordable housing and the need for a permanent funding source.
Thank you. I've moved, it was seconded by Councilmember Moreno. Six yeas. Wait, hang on one second. Let me see if I can, I know, I know, I know. Let me see if I can. Thank you. There you go. Seven zero.
We're now on top of page fifty-two. Resolution line over R twenty-four ninety-five has been deferred to April fourth. At the bottom of the page, motion M twenty-four ninety-six by Councilmember Thomas by request, adding the president of the council as a signatory to the amendment number five to the contract between the city of New Orleans and Hammerman and Gaynor, and authorizing the president of the council to sign the amendment number five to the contract between the city of New Orleans and Hammerman and Gaynor, exhibit A.
Approved by the committee, adding the council president as a signatory. Move adoption. The contract, it was approved after Public Works. It will provide liability and physical damage claims, handling and processing services for annual costs of two hundred and five thousand dollars. I had predicted I was going to have to do that. It's been moved by me, seconded by?
Green.
Mine didn't come up. Once again, it's a conspiracy. I have a malfunction with my screen. Okay, there we go. Five yeas, six yeas, no nays, and the motion is approved. And that's by request.
We're on top of page fifty-three. We have motion M twenty-four ninety-seven by Councilmember Thomas by request, adding the president of the council as a signatory to the amendment to the professional service agreement between the city of New Orleans and Saki Associates, Inc., and authorizing the president of the council to sign the amendment to the professional service agreement between the city of New Orleans and Saki Associates, Inc. The Public Works Committee recommended approval.
Moved by the committee, and now that I know I have to read the brief, the committee recommended approval yesterday. The contract with Saki Associates is continued development of the master plan for Lincoln Beach. The total contract is for one million twenty-two thousand dollars. Moved by me, seconded by the person who seconded. Five yeas, six yeas, no nays, and the motion is approved. Thank you all.
At the bottom of the page.
I know.
We have motion. We have motion M twenty-four ninety-eight by Councilmember Thomas by request, adding the president of the council as signatory to the amendment to the professional service agreement between the city of New Orleans and Digital Engineering and Imaging, Inc., and author- Orleans and Digital Engineering and Imaging, Inc., and authorizing the President of the Council to sign the Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement between the City of New Orleans and Digital Engineering and Imaging, Inc. The Public Works Committee recommended approval.
Adding the Council President's, uh, uh, signature, uh, as the Fifth Amendment to the Contract for Digital Engineering as part of the redevelopment of Design Team, is for an additional year at four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand dollars. And, uh, they're actually the local team that's been on this project, so importantly, to include them. Uh, moved by me, seconded by the seconded. Six yeas, no nays, and the, uh, motion is adopted. Thank you all, guys.
At the top of page fifty-four. We have motion M-2499 by Councilmember Green by request, adding the President of the Council as a signatory to the contract between the City of New Or- and Cypress Biosafety Consulting, LLC, and authorizing the President of the Council to sign the contract between the City of New Orleans and Cypress Biosafety, and Exhibit A. The Public Works Committee recommended approval.
Members of the Council, and the public, since it was approved just yesterday, I will read the summary. This professional services agreement allows the Mosquito Termite and Rodent Control Board to develop, improve, and implement a biosafety, biocontainment, and biosecurity program for the mosquito-controlled genetics lab. This will allow for in-house avir viral screening of mosquitoes and rodents, which in turn allows the Control Board the ability to respond faster and more efficiently to potential disease transmission. Cypress Biosafety will act as the biosafety consultant for the board, and as the board increases the in-house capacity. It's a five-year agreement. It's a ten-thousand-dollar maximum per year contract, fifty-thousand dollars maximum over the life of this agreement. I move for approval.
Kill all the mosquitoes.
Get them all.
Kill them all.
And the rodents.
Yeah, and the possums, too, if they're in your house.
All right, seven yeas. This is an exciting time.
I got more vermin in my neighborhood now.
We're now at the bottom of the page, M-24100 by Councilmember Moreno by request, adding the President of the Council as a signatory to the Amendment Number Two to the Professional Service Agreement between the City and IAS Law, LLC, and authorizing the President of the Council to sign the Amendment Number Two to the Professional Service Agreement between the City and IAS Law, LLC.
I have a technical question. Anita, do I, do I need to suspend the rules on this one, because I didn't have a quorum for economic development when it was heard? I do? Okay. Madam Clerk, I need to suspend the rules first.
Okay.
Um, so that we can hear this.
We need to suspend Rule Fifty-seven.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Giuruso. Aye. One, two, three. I have, I have six. Um, uh, members, this was heard in Economic Development the other day, as I mentioned. Uh, it's an extension of a, of a legal contract that Civil Service has. Um, I believe the ex, the, uh, number for the extension is roughly fifteen thousand dollars, and Amy Trapani presented. Um, six yeas, no nays. Seven? Do I have seven? Okay, six, six.
Okay, that was for the suspension of the rules.
No, we had already voted on that. It, we just did it verbally.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we'll just vote again. That's fine. Six yeas, no nays.
Okay.
I'll need to suspend the rules on the next one, too. Madam Clerk.
Yes. Motion M-24101 by Councilmember Moreno by request, adding the President of the Council as a signatory to the Amendment Number Two to the Professional Service Agreement between the City and J.A. Ginsburg, and authorizing the President of the Council to sign the Amendment Number Two to the Professional Service Agreement between the City and J.A. Ginsburg.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, seconded by Councilmember Giuruso. This is Rule Fifty-seven. On favor. Six yeas, no nays. Um, this is a, another extension for a legal contract for, um, for Civil Service. Once again, this was heard in the Economic Development Committee. Amy Trapani, the Director, presented. Make a motion to adopt. Seconded by Councilmember Morell. Six yeas, no nays.
Now, at the bottom of the page. We have motion M-24102 by Councilmember Giuruso by request, ratifying, confirming, and approving the Mayor's appointment of Olin Parker, Vice Catherine Baldwin, as a member of the New Orleans Recreation Development Commission, representing the Orleans Parish School Board, effective upon approval by the Council of the City of New Orleans, for a term that will expire at the discretion of the Orleans Parish School Board.
Uh, we did not actually take this matter up in committee either because of the waiver issue. So Anita, do I need to suspend Fifty-seven on this?
Uh, yes, please.
All right. I'll move to suspend Rule Fifty-seven. Seconded by Councilmember Harris. Five yeas, no nays. Because he wasn't, he didn't have the waiver. And now on the motion itself, I'll move for approval. Seconded also by Councilmember Harris. Six yeas, no nays.
We're now going to go to the top of page Fifty-seven. We have motion M-24110 by Councilmember Thomas by request, adding the President of the Council as a signatory to the Second Amendment of the Emergency Demolition Con- Contract between, between the City and Dur Heavy Construction, LLC, and authorizing the President of the Council to sign the Second Amendment between the City and Dur Heavy Construction, LLC. The Public Works Committee recommended approval.
Authorizing the extension of the work that's already been done. Uh, the existing contract concerns a four-million-one-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand dollars, inclusive of the non-emergency demolition services that are already being provided. Uh, moved by, uh, myself, seconded by the, the seconded. All in favor of moving for, motion forward. Six yeas, no nays, and the motion is adopted. Uh, M-24109, was that done already?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
At the bottom of the page, M-24111 has been deferred to April fourth and referred to the Climate Control Committee. On top of Fifty-eight, we have motion M-24112 by Councilmember Morell and Giuruso, requesting and authorizing the President of the Council to execute a Third Amendment to the Professional Service Agreement between the City of New Orleans and Barasso Houston Cuperman Freeman and Savar, Saviar, LLC, extending the term of the agreement for one year, and increasing the maximum compensation payable under the agreement by two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to ensure continuity of services during the extension term, and containing such other provisions as may be necessary or desirable to accomplish the purpose of this motion. Do we have to suspend Rule Fifty-seven for this one? No? Okay.
No. Um, members, this is in connection with the Wisner litigation. Because everything continues to be so contested, we need to continue to pay our lawyers to represent the city's interests. I've moved for approval, seconded by Councilmember Morell. Five yeas, no nays. Thank you.
At the bottom of the page, motion M-24113 has been deferred to April fourth. We have Resolution R-24118 by Councilmember Green, a resolution calling an election in the Lake Shore Crime Prevention District for Saturday, November the fifth, twenty-twenty-four. We need to suspend the rules to receive this resolution?
Moved and seconded. Members, please vote your machines. Five yeas, no nays. Members, this is simply a, um, resolution calling for a November fifth, twenty-twenty-four vote to approve or disapprove the levy of an annual fee in the Lake Shore community not to exceed four-hundred-and-twenty dollars per parcel per year. The fee is estimated to generate two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty dollars per year solely for the purpose of aiding in crime prevention within that Lake Shore Crime Prevention District. The reason that we're voting on it today under the suspension of the rules is that it was approaching a deadline, not because of anything on the city's end, but there were negotiations that had to take place on the Lake Shore Crime Prevention District side. So I move for approval of the, um, the, um, motion as amended, the resolution as amended.
No, Councilmember, you have, you have to, we're still in the suspension.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to add it.
Yes. Right, I move to add it to the agenda. Sorry. Five, five zero. Now I move for approval of the resolution.
Councilmember Green, can I just say one thing very quickly?
Yes.
Um, the Law Department has advised us, because the ordinance as originally drafted said Robert E. Lee, that your, um, your instrument that you're offering today has to also say Robert E. Lee Boulevard instead of Allen Tucson. So that is not an oversight, it is the legal opinion of the Law Department about why the language is that way, so I don't want you to catch any heat unnecessarily.
Right. I don't know, was that our staff having used Robert E. Lee, or who used that?
No, no, no. Apparently, this is, this is because the original legislation as drafted uses Robert E. Lee, that, and that apparently governing state legislation has not been changed, that we have to continue to, to use Robert E. Lee, even though the name of, of the street has changed to Allen Tucson.
All right, I know that a former state legislator or two is going to help me change that. I'm not going to be referring to Robert E. Lee unless it's absolutely necessary, but we'll talk about that later. We gotta, gotta get it passed. All right. Five yeas, no nays, and the resolution is adopted.
Councilmembers, we need to suspend the rules to go to ordinances on first reading.
I guess I do, huh?
All in favor?
Aye.
Orders on first.
Orders on first readings, ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six-seven, six-seventeen by Councilmember King, in ordinance to effect a zoning change from an LI Light Industrial District to an MU one Medium Intensity Misused District on lots one through sixteen and twenty-eight through thirty-two, on the square six, six oh eight, lots A and B on square six fifty, as well as the portion of North Robinson Street, between the two squares and the third municipal district bounded by North Clayborne Avenue, Crest Street, St. Ferdinand Street, and North Villery Street. Municipal address, twenty-eight hundred through twenty-eight forty, North Clayborne Avenue, twenty-eight hundred, North Robinson Street, and twenty-eight oh one through twenty-eight thir- thirty-nine, North Robinson Street. Fourteen oh seven through fourteen thirty-seven, South St. Ferdinand Street, fifteen fifteen and fifteen twenty-three, St. Ferdinand Street, and twenty-eight sixty-five, North Villery Street, and otherwise supervisor respects their two zoning document, ten twenty-four. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six eighteen by Councilmember King, in ordinance to establish a conditional use permit, a three, conditional use to permit a three-unit, multifamily resident in an HMR three Historic Marine Natural Me Bywater Residential District, located on square three eighty-two, lot nine or eighteen, in the third municipal district bounded by Columbus Street, Henrietta Delilah Street, Calorex Street, and Marais Street. Municipal address, twelve twenty through twelve twenty-two, Columbus Street, and otherwise supervisor respects their two zoning document, thirteen twenty-four. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four and six nineteen by Councilmember King, in ordinance to effect a zoning change from an HURD two Historic Urban Two Family Residential District to an HUMU Historic Urban Mixed Use District, located on square one fourteen, lot seven in the fifth municipal district, bounded by Apalusa's Avenues, Pacific Avenue, Elmyra Avenue, and Avalina, Avalina Street. Municipal address, nine thirty-four, Apalusa Avenue, and six thirty-one through six thirty-five, Pacific Avenue, and otherwise supervisor respects their two zoning document, fourteen twenty-four. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six twenty by Councilmember Harris, in ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit a standard restaurant in an HUB one Historic Urban Neighborhood Business District in the Magazine Street Use Restriction Overlay District on square one thirty-five, lots one slash three, or an undesignated lot in the fourth municipal district bounded by Magazine Street, Jackson Avenue, Constance Street, and Josephine Street. Municipal address is twenty-one thirty-eight through twenty-one forty, Magazine Street, and ten thirty-one to, through ten forty-one, Jackson Avenue, and otherwise supervisor respects their two zoning document, seven twenty-four. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six twenty-one by Councilmembers Morell and Moreno, in ordinance to amend and re-ordain chapter one fifty of the Code of the City of New Orleans to add section one fifty through fifty-four, dash fifty-four, provided for an avalorium tax exemption for two-thousand-five-hundred dollars of the assessed valuation of the property received, a homestead exemption that is owned and occupied by a qualified first responder, and otherwise supervisor respects their two. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six sixteen by Councilmembers Giuruso, Moreno, Morell, Harris, and Thomas, in ordinance to provide, in ordinance to codify the city's net thirty obligations to its vendors and contractors for the payment of all undisputed amounts within thirty days of receipt of a valid invoice, to amend and re-ordain section two dash five fifty-one of the Code, of the City Code, to require city departments to appear before council to discuss the reports detailing all outstanding vendor invoices required therein, and otherwise supervisor respects their two. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six twenty-two by Councilmembers Giuruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, in ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-nine seven thirty-five, MCS as amended in title, in ordinance, in ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-four, to appropriate donated funds to the Chief Administrative Office for Maintenance and Upkeep of the Joan of Arc statue and surrounding grounds at one thousand Decatur Street, and otherwise supervisor respects their two. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six twenty-three by Councilmembers Giuruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, in ordinance to amend ordinance calendar number twenty-nine seven thirty-six as amended in title, in ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-four, to appropriate donated funds to the Chief Administrative Office for Maintenance and Upkeep of the Joan of Arc statue and surrounding grounds at one thousand Decatur Street, and otherwise supervisor respects their two. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six twenty-four by Councilmembers Giuruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, in ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-nine seven thirty-five, MCS as amended in title, in ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-four, to appro- appropriate grant funds to the Health Department for the health care for the homeless COVID-nineteen vaccination expansion program, and otherwise supervisor respects their two. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six twenty-five by Councilmembers Giuruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, in ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-nine seven thirty-six, MCS as amended in title, in ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-four, to appropriate grant funds to the Health Department for the health care for the homeless COVID-nineteen vaccination expansion program, and otherwise supervisor respects their two. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six twenty-six by Councilmembers Giuruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, in ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-nine seven thirty-five, MCS as amended in title, in ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-four, to appropriate State Act one seven, one seventy funds for the Office of the Mayor for Inflation Reduction Act activities with Strive Foundation for Louisiana Delgado Community College and the University of New Orleans Research and Technology Foundation, and St. Kofa Fresh Market Initiative, and otherwise supervisor respects their two. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six twenty-four by Councilmembers Giuruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, in ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-nine seven thirty-six, MCS as amended in title, in ordinance, thirty-four thousand six twenty-seven by Councilmembers Giuruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, in ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-nine seven thirty-six, MCS as amended in title, in ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the City of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-four, to appropriate State Act one seventy funds to the Office of the Mayor for Inflation Reduction Act activities with Strive Foundation for Louisiana Delgado Community College, the University of New Orleans Research and Technology Foundation, the St. Kofa Fresh Market Initiative, and otherwise supervisor respects their two. Ordinance calendar number thirty-four thousand six twenty-eight by Councilmember Harris by request, in ordinance to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a First Amendment to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the City of New Orleans and Total Community Action, Inc., with a total compensation exceeding one million for the public purpose of supporting the city efforts to address the needs of homeless individuals and families to maintain ongoing operations of the low-barrier shelter in the City of New Orleans as more fully detailed in the First Amendment Cooperative in the First Amendment Cooperative Endeavor Agreement, form attached here to as Exhibit Eight and otherwise supervisor respects there too. Orders calendar number 34,629 by Councilmembers King, Green, and Thomas by request, in order to operate, to authorize the mayor of the City of New Orleans to enter into a Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the City of New Orleans and a Frenchmark Cooperation for the Design and Construction of Improvements to the Upper Pontella Building, including the repair and replacement of the HVAC system, related electrical and mechanical systems, courios, windows, facade, and other exterior interior repairs as set forth in the form attached here to as Exhibit Eight and may part here of and otherwise supervisor respects there too. That concludes orders on first reading.
All right. Thank you. The motion's been made to adjourn. Councilmember Green, seconded by me. Five yeas, no nays. We're adjourned.